Thank you, Commissioner. It's June 4th and it is 9:07 a.m. Good morning and welcome to the June State Board of Education meeting. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you're done speaking, and please turn off your cell phones. Thank you. Live web streaming is available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Agenda item 1, call to order. The June Board meeting will now come to order. Patricia Timm and Deborah Neary have both contacted me in advance to let me know that they would both be absent from today's meeting. Agenda item 1.1, roll call. Andrea, please call the roll.
Patty Goobles? Jaclyn Morrison?
Present.
Deborah Neary?
Patsy Cog Johns?
Here.
Lisa Fricki?
Here.
Maureen Nichols?
Here.
Robyn Stevens?
Here.
Patricia Timm? Commissioner Bloomstead? Six present, two absent.
Thank you, we do have a quorum. Agenda item 1.2, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item 1.3. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted as you enter the room from the main hallway doors. The Opens Meeting Act is also posted on the State Board of Education's website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Just so you all know, at 10:30, I have made a decision for the Board to take a 15-minute break at that time. Agenda item 1.14, COVID-19 Meeting Protocol. Ryan For?
Actually, I'll just cover that. So I pretty much covered the safety things today. Obviously, the hotel, I believe that they have their masking requirements based on vaccination. Otherwise, just try to be safe and give people the room that they need.
Thank you. Agenda item 1.5, the Commissioner's Report on Health Education Standards Process. Commissioner?
Yeah, and I'm going to be able to, first of all, welcome in Cory Epler and Lacey Peters. I think they're going to be able to participate by Zoom, so we'll see how this goes. Anyway, that's always the technology side. I wanted to start with a little bit of kind of perspective, obviously, on where we're at, and many of you know and have been following very closely the efforts on the health standards. The health standards themselves were released as a draft in March. All or many of you know that. Board members, obviously, as we've gone down that particular path, our intention all along has been to make sure that we listen to the public, that we hear the concerns, that we hear the ideas, the things that can make this particular draft better. And so we continue to do that and do very much appreciate the kind of the efforts underway. I wanted today to be able to present, and this is, by the way, just for everyone that's here and for the listening public generally, this is actually the first time we're having the discussion with the full Board. We've only so far really taken public comment. We've had a bit of a chance in the committee and a committee report, but I do very much appreciate this chance to be able to talk through some of this with folks' attention here. I am going to maybe have Cory, I forget who's going to display the slides up there because it's not me apparently, so I'll have someone put the slides up. The other primary thing, so we want to walk through a little bit today of where we're at in the process, what the timeline kind of looks like, give you a good sense and give the Board a good sense of kind of what we've talked about so far. Our attention somewhat to the details of the public comment, and we're still actually analyzing that, there's been a lot of public comment, but we're going to walk through some of what those themes are, talk a little bit about the expectations for the writing committee as we kind of proceed and where we go, and I know the committee then will lead a bit of a dialogue on, you know, kind of what those next steps are. So again, appreciate that very much, and we might be having some technical issues as I don't see the slide yet, so I can't. The crazy part in a long room is I can't see down to the folks that are working on it, so.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Cory.
Okay, the slide?
So essentially, I walked through the goals, Cory, and if you go ahead and start on the portion related to the comments so far.
Commissioner, his connection is not stable, and that's why he keeps dropping out.
Is Lacey's stable?
I can share my slides, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Lacey, thank you. Ah, technology, you gotta love it. Why do I feel like I'm in the Charlie Brown zone all of a sudden? So Cory, I might just ask you to disconnect for a bit and see if you can call back in, and Lacey and I will start down.
As indicated, we have had a great deal of public comment.
Hey Drew, do you want to go ahead and just text him in the background? Lacey and I will wing it, we'll see how we do. So Lacey, you're able to advance slides.
We can't hear you, Lacey.
I'm going to vamp a bit. So the reality for the State Board's conversations on the things that we've heard around public comment overall, right, the types of things you expected, many of you have written, many of you have filled out the survey, you know, preliminarily, we're looking at all of those different emails that were sent to us, all of the survey results, trying to look at the type of feedback, right, that we've received. And there was a lot of feedback around what's the community's role, what's the parents' role, what's the, do teachers really, are they really the right ones to be able to provide those particular insights, right? And so I think it's really important that folks understand, that we understand, how to kind of right-size those various roles of what's most important and how the standards work overall. And so if we're able to get Cory back, he'll do a much better job of explaining kind of how standards generally work for the Department of Education. But what I want to make clear is that we've been listening, there's concerns about several different things, and Lacey, I might have to go to the next slide if it's working anyway, just several different things, and that's pretty small, even I have a hard time reading it. But honestly, the engagement with family, the engagement with parents, the engagement with the schools and communities, the recognition of what are really kind of private things, different than we might have experienced with math education, right? Some people don't think about math education and the role of parents, but there is a role of parents, right? And we have to balance all of those things out in the education system overall. So we're really trying to be cognizant of the purposes of that feedback and understand that some of those things were problematic. Concerns around what we, some folks said age-appropriate in us, we might say developmentally-appropriate in us, making sure that that gets aligned and making sure that that work is really done. Now, it's a lot, it's a lot to put these standards together. By the way, and for folks who have been paying attention, we have not adopted health standards in the state of Nebraska before, right? So this is a first effort. And again, designed in a first effort was, here's the first draft, we definitely will have a second draft, right, and we're going to encourage your participation in that. One of the things I believe that the committee really wanted to also recognize is this chance to gather this input, go back to the writing committee, be able to put in the types of things that we've been hearing from folks, and when we come out with that second draft, we expect your comments as well, right? We hope we've hit the mark a little bit in a sense that we're finding those balance points, and that's where we go. And so that's very much the intention of that. Lacey, do you want to hit a little bit about the writing process for me as well? I did not do as well as Cory, but that's how that goes, so, although you could understand me, so that part was good.
Absolutely. So the analysis of that public input and those themes that we just showed, as well as a full, because that was preliminary data, and once we have a full report, we'll have a better notion of how those themes were represented within the public input. But all of that feedback will be used to inform the development of draft number two. Some of the following types of changes may be included. So this could be changes to the structure, which include reevaluating some of the standards, EGs or examples that were provided, indicators and strands overall. Changes could include removal and/or addition of topics, such as adding a greater emphasis on parental and caregiver roles, or removing certain words, phrases, or content. Some of the changes could also include rewording topics, words or phrases that might be confusing, such as reworking an indicator to better represent the intent of it that is appropriate for that grade level. Some specific considerations for draft number two, based on the preliminary data and feedback the NDE has heard through public input, include reinforce the importance of families, guardians, and caregivers in health education, as we mentioned. This may be done through specific wording within an indicator, implementation resources, or removal of certain items, evaluating the content and indicators to ensure developmental appropriateness across the entire document, with special attention to the elementary levels, looking at the overall length of the document and examining repetition and number of indicators, as well as examining the level of detail within each indicator and ensuring that the specificity of those indicators is consistent and appropriate across all content strands and standards. And then also reevaluating that each indicator is measurable and directly measures the standard it is associated with. So the NDE and Standards Writing Team will begin work this summer on revisions and edits for a draft number two. The goal then being for draft number two to be publicly available in early fall. And once draft number two is made available to the public, a revised public input survey with a simplified design will open for feedback. Then Commissioner, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, thank you, and we'll see if Dr. Epler is available now too, but the role of the Department of Education in setting standards, and we've actually heard this, like, when I go back, and even in the concerns that have been raised by folks in this particular moment, that people really do look at these standards and use these standards, right? I think that's actually a really important thing for the Board. I think there is sometimes where folks may say, well, they don't have to adopt them, but I've heard from plenty of school folks too, right, about the importance of getting this right to ensure that they're able to balance the local decision-making part of this puzzle with the needs of families and children that are in their care and in their regular attendance, and just also even with our non-public schools and how they use those. And so we've taken this opportunity to learn quite a bit about how that process works, and I think that's really important. So I'll see if Cory's with us, if not, I will continue to do my...
Can you hear me, Commissioner?
Yep, I can, thank you, Cory.
Okay, I'm going to keep my video off. I apologize, the Internet and rural areas aren't working very well this morning. So I did just want to reference the NDE's role in developing content area standards, and one of the things that we've worked over the last several years was to create a consistent process for the development and/or revision of all content area standards. So the process which we've used to develop the health education standards has been consistent with other content area standards. And our hope with content area standards is that they do reflect knowledge and skills that students are expected to learn in a given content area. And one of the things that we've heard from our school folks is that they appreciate the standards, that they really do help set this trajectory for the type of knowledge across all grade levels. Because what we know about knowledge and how knowledge builds is it's very complex, so the standards allow for the ability to have our writing team, our Nebraska educators, really to develop knowledge that has a clear scope and sequence that also becomes more in-depth over time. The other thing that you'll see on the slide, and it's hyperlinked, and we can make sure that it's in the agenda, is we have developed a Content Area Standards Reference Guide. I believe it was developed in 2017, and we're in the process of revising that. This Reference Guide articulates the why behind content area standards. It outlines a general framework for the revision of Nebraska's content area standards, and then also identifies some of the quality components that we seek to ensure that our standards include as well.
So, yeah, thanks Cory, and one thing I will just add, that I know we've had conversations in the committee, the importance of that process for all standards area. Again, back to, and we're going to talk just a little bit about the purpose of the health standards, and we can move to that next slide, but the reality, I think, for us as a Board is trying to make sure that that's used, that our process is actually appropriate for the content areas that we're also addressing. So admission, right? Maybe this process didn't, the process that worked for math maybe didn't work exactly the same for health standards, right? So we're trying to be cognizant, making sure that we're taking our time to adjust for that process to ensure that we get the proper engagement too. So, Lacey, I'll turn it over, turn it over to you for a little bit of rundown on the health education side.
Yeah, so the goal overall for health education standards is really to help motivate students to maintain and improve their health. So this can be done through advocating for themselves and others, preventing disease, forming healthy relationships, and avoiding or reducing some of those health-related risk behaviors. And it's not just for now, but also for their future and throughout their lifetime. So as Cory and Dr. Epler and Commissioner mentioned, the standards create a framework for students, and in this case, it's to acquire health-related knowledge and skills, that skill development is huge across multiple dimensions. So this looks at physical, mental, social, emotional, et cetera, necessary to maintain and promote lifelong health.
Yeah, and thanks, Lacey, and just one of the, I'll just kind of go to this point and then end and turn it over to, back to the President, but the reality for us, as we continue to do this work, it is with very much the intention of protecting kids and being aware. And we've had all sorts of comments about, oh, this is going to go this way or that way, right? We're attentive to all those types of comments, wanting to make sure that ultimately this is for the well-being of students across the state of Nebraska, that we do that well, that the partnerships between parents and families and communities, that that's really part of that process. And so those things are all in our mind as we continue this work and continue to move forward. So I appreciate very much this opportunity to kind of give a little bit of rundown, sorry for the technical difficulties, but I'll turn it over to Maureen then for the next part of the conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to Dr. Epler and Dr. Peters. I think that helps to give a good narration for the public. Agenda item 1.6 is the AQUEST Teaching, Learning, and Serving Domain Committee Discussion on Health Standards, on the Health Standards Process. Chair Lisa Fricki?
Thank you, Madam President. As Chair of the Teaching and Learning Committee, I thank all of you for being here, and if you've emailed me or contacted me in some way, I think we've all been, you know, doing our best to respond. The Teaching and Learning Committee continues, and I'm going to read this, I don't want any technical problems, so I'm going to look down at my notes, but, "continues to monitor effort and progress to gather public input and provide guidance for the second draft of the proposed health standards to make sure key areas of concern are addressed in the second draft. Today, the whole Board, for the first time, will have the opportunity to be engaged in the next steps. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the NDE staff and team for continuing the effort to gather this information, tons, over 10,000 potential data points, so I don't know how they get it all done, but they do, in a timely and orderly fashion. So remember, the process is intended to gather input, and that's you all. And we encourage the public to continue input after draft two. Changes will be happening, and your concerns, read it. If it's not addressed, let us know. If there's something else, let us know. This is a team effort for every single student in the state of Nebraska to be healthy and safe in a way that is developmentally appropriate." So we encourage that input, and I want to ask my fellow Board members, do you have any questions about, first of all, the process, steps, next steps, or about the report that I just gave? Well, this isn't actually my report, it's kind of an introduction to the entire Board conversation. So if you have any questions about the process or next stop, next stops, oh boy, next steps, I'm not even helped with technology, so anyway, process or next steps, we'll focus on those two areas. So, Madam President, I turn it over to you.
Board members, dialogue?
I'll start. I would say that as early as our April Board meeting, we directed the Commissioner and the Department of Education to start thinking about and moving toward a draft two, because we were hearing important comments from the public about things both that they supported as well as things that they objected to in the first draft. So that notion of the first draft being the only draft was an incorrect notion. So as long ago as April, we've started moving toward draft number two in terms of, I guess, the way at least I've been thinking as a Board member. And I will admit, for me, and I don't want to speak for other Board members, but for me, certainly, the process is working as it's intended to work, though it has been a painful process. I think sometimes out of pain comes important decisions. But this process is in motion, it is working the way it's supposed to, feedback has been gathered, it's being analyzed, and we're moving toward our next draft. As Lisa said, I think it's really important for everyone to watch for draft number two. That's the way that you can determine if the concerns you have have been addressed, or if suggestions you had for including additional information in the health standards, if that's happened. Because you have the opportunity then to, through, hopefully, a more simplified survey, to provide input, or to continue communicating with us as individual Board members. So I think we have all learned, as the Commissioner said, that the standards process that we have used consistently may not have quite been the same process that worked for these standards, but that's what learning is, right? We all, we all learn as we go through processes, and I think as a result of the health education standards, we will make improvements to our standard development process in general, as well as specifically related to the health ed standards.
First of all, I really appreciate what Mrs. Goobles just stated, because she's right on. I just wanted to reemphasize a couple of points, and the question that comes to me, not regularly, but somewhat, is where do you stand? Where do you stand on this? And I have a canned response. As soon as I get a document that is worthy of our debate and our discussion, you will know where I stand. I know that that doesn't necessarily hit home with everybody and that it's really acceptable, but that's where I am. I feel that I need to be open, that I need to listen, and that is the process that we are in right now. Just to, again, follow along with what Mrs. Goobles so eloquently pointed out, and it came to me when, well, really, it's been in my mind for some time, but it really came out to me when we did the pledge. And it's the second time that I've been involved with a pledge that was said with such enthusiasm and heartfelt. It wasn't just something that we did at the beginning of the day, or the beginning of the meeting, or whatever. And it reminds me that there is so much more that unites us than the difficulties that we have. And I know that we're having difficulties right now, and Mrs. Goobles pointed out, but ultimately, we are together, we are united. There is much more that unites us than what tears us apart. And too many times, we get focused on only the negative or the differences, and I want to continue to emphasize, there is much more that unites each and every one of us.
I'll do this, just so I don't forget. No outbursts, if possible, so we appreciate that, regardless when other speakers go, even if we all liked it, right? That's okay. So just no outbursts, please.
I'm excited that we get the opportunity to talk to you guys about this, so I just wanted to go over a couple of things. Whenever we have public comment, it is our Board's rule that we are only supposed to ask points of clarification. So if there is something that is said that we don't understand or that we want clarified, then we can ask a question. But it really doesn't give us an opportunity to engage or to have true dialogue with people in the audience. And I know sometimes we want to, but it really is a policy that we have that we can't. And so I don't want anyone to think that as we're sitting here and listening, we don't want to talk to you and we don't want to dialogue or to respond. It's just that we have not amended that policy, and part of public comment is really to give us an opportunity to listen to you. And so the points that we ask should be to clarify something that you said, but it's not because we don't want to give you a platform or ability or opportunity to express or to dialogue with us. We're limited in our own rules. So I just wanted to tell people that, so that you kind of knew, know a little bit more about why we're sometimes so quiet or silent up here, because we're listening. The other thing I wanted to say is, it might have come out here already today, but as I was going through the process of the health standards, I was confused about some things, and I've heard a lot of those same questions kind of coming. We had, me and another Board member had a town hall earlier this week, and I saw some of the questions that came out, and I think one of the questions has been about who made up the writing committee, who are these writers, and also the advisory committee, and I just wanted to kind of clarify that there are two separate committees. So there is the writing committee, and there's also the advisory committee. And the writing committee is actually, you could find this process online or through other means, but the writing committee, there was an application that went out to educators throughout the state and their subject matter experts, so either if they're teaching physical education, health education, some type of health education throughout the state, and then people actually applied to be on the committee through an application process, and the Department has a rubric. And based on their experience, their education level, their knowledge, their previous experience with writing and things like that, the applicants are kind of, I don't want to say graded, but kind of ranked, and then the applicants are chosen for the writing committee. So I personally have just seen a lot of questions about that process and what it's in... So I personally have just seen a lot of questions about that process and what it's entailed. So I just kind of wanted to be a little bit more transparent about that and let you guys know what I have found as I'm receiving questions from you. I forward them to the Commissioner or to someone in the Department of Education and say, these are the questions I'm getting. Can you help me out? And so that's just some of the answers or knowledge that I've got. So hopefully, that's helpful to people who are here. And I thank you guys for coming.
Actually, I do, sorry. I pushed the button. How about now? Nope, you're on. So I think Lisa asked-
Make sure the green light's on, Jaclyn.
Lisa, you did ask one question. And so one of the questions I did have that people have asked me of the committee is, in going to the second draft, will people be added to the drafting team or to the advisory team that were not there before? So that's one question that I do have.
And that would be directed to the Commissioner?
So, now his mind working, all right. It's still a bit underconsidered. I think the writing team, one of the other things with the writing team is that, and again, I'm back to where our typical process had been. And so we're kind of looking at how we can do that and ensure that we're engaging other folks in that process. So it's actually pretty hard to assemble a writing team. I mean, I hate to tell you, but, and I'm going to maybe say it this way, that it's one of those challenges, people don't just sign up. We don't pay people, you know, money or anything in particular to participate in that. And our state laws do say that it's Nebraska educators that are participating. So we'll find some way to open it up for that. Also, I just want to add, like on the advisory and other ways, and we've heard, you know, concerns that certain folks weren't engaged. So we're looking for some other things to kind of add to that process to ensure that there's other voices at the table and able to be part of that. Another key part is our engagement with the committee overall. And we'll continue to do that with the Teaching and Learning Committee for the board to make sure that we're following back there. The board members really are representatives of the people, right? And I want folks, we take that very seriously, and I know the board members do too. And so they'll continue to provide that input. And I appreciate the question. I don't know if I answered it super directly, but that's what I know right now.
First of all, I also want to thank you for all being here. And I want you to know, I've had some people say, well, you've already made up your mind. You know what you're going to do. And so why would, you know, why would we bother to come and say what we think and tell you what we're worried about, tell you what we appreciate about it if you've already made up your mind? And so I'd like to assure you that I am conflicted about so many things in this. I have grandchildren and I love them with all my heart, like so many of you have told me. And so I want to make sure whatever we do is good for them. I spent my whole life in a classroom. And some of the people out here, even my students from the past. And I assure you that my goal in education was always to do what was right and good for kids. And I haven't changed that motto just because I became a state board member. That's still very, very important to me. So now here's a little challenge to you. In all of the time that I've been on the state board, I've never seen crowds like this.[832.75][832.75](LAUGHING) Okay? So I think that's amazing. So I want to challenge you to be lifelong participants in our process. Because we have language arts standards coming up, which I happen to teach. We have fine art standards coming up, which I happen to teach. And I have this strange belief that all of the academics are very important to the children of Nebraska. And so I challenge you to come back to the public meetings, the public comments, and tell me what you think at those as well. Because you are the voices we need to hear and that we appreciate. And I know it's not easy to get off of work. I know it's not easy to travel. I was up at four this morning coming in, and so I understand that. So, but you made the effort today, and I want you to continue to do that. So thank you. All my heart says gratitude, gratitude to the people of Nebraska.
Lisa? Thank you, Patsy and Jaclyn, Patty and Robyn for your comments and your questions. That's very important. And each one said something that is truly a part of this process. And in this process of your input, I can already tell you, the intent, because of your input, is to simplify the survey for draft two. And also, for the proposed health standards, changes to- Good morning. Thank you. Changes to the actual health standard or standards process. And that's coming about because of your questions and your input to us in emails. So thank you. And this isn't the report, but thank you for the opportunity to get the entire board engaged in the process and next steps. Agenda item two, public comment period. We will now have public comment period. This period of public comment is available for any person who wishes to address the state board on subjects within its authority. Please note that public comment should be on topics related to the state board's constitutional and statutory authority. Thanks again to the members of the public who have attended and who have signed up to speak. Agenda item 2.1, request for 10-minute special appearance. We have one 10-minute special appearance today. Judy Henning has requested and been granted a special appearance to comment. Judy, welcome. You have 10 minutes.
Hello. And thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Nebraska School Librarians at this board meeting. Welcome to Carney. I am Judy Henning. I'm a professor at the University of Nebraska at Carney. I'm coordinator for the Graduate School Library Program. I teach teachers who are trying to acquire their school library endorsement. I have three different programs, two master's programs and just an endorsement program with approximately 100 graduate students enrolled currently. I have taught for 38 years. I retired in 2018. And 31 of those years, I was a school librarian. So I know what it's about. I've been there, and I know how it works. So the biggest problem we have is in our name. When you think of a librarian, the first thing you think of is the antiquated person that sat behind the circulation desk, bespectacled, and a bun in the back of their hair and checking out books. That's just not what we do. I wish, I wish we could change our name. But however, our national association, back when No Child Left Behind became legislation, unfortunately, they were contacted and they said, so what are the library people called? Well, in Nebraska, they're called media specialists. In Iowa, they're called teacher librarians. In Texas, they're called school librarians. They're information specialists, all kinds of things. Well, we need one name. Well, in the process, No Child Left Behind was passed, and there was no language for school librarians and school libraries when that was passed. And it was pretty devastating for our community of librarians in our profession. So we were not going to let that happen again. And what we did was, we, in 2010, they decided, I wasn't on this committee, but they told us that now professionally, as a national group, we are school librarians. And I remember coming back from that national conference and meeting with my Carney Public Schools, School Library Team. And I said, well, just so you know, now you are school librarians. And there was a grumbling amongst the group. And one of my middle school librarians said, but Judy, we do so much more than a librarian. And she's right. So just so you know, the reason we've kept the name, one of the main reasons, is for that money. Obama did the Race to the Top Funds, which we didn't qualify for because of charter schools. But later on, when he passed the Elementary and Secondary School Act and Every Student Achieves Act did include the language of school librarians. So if there is federal money available for schools and school libraries, they will be included in that language. So what is the role of a school librarian? Our school librarians empower learners to be curious, conscientious, digital citizens, thinkers, enthusiastic readers, skillful researchers, and conscientious digital citizens. This is the work of trained, certified, expert librarians, not pares or volunteers. So what do school librarians do? I've got about eight main things that they do. And I want, I have given each one of you a copy of this handout. It talks about the research that shows the importance of school librarians on academic achievement. And I want to especially show you the top in red. You will see a link to a presentation that was done by Stephanie Skirdla-Green. She took my position at Carney High School and is an outstanding school librarian. She, at the end of this school year, presented to her administration, she does it every year, I did it back in the day too, telling them exactly what they did, what she did in that past school year. So if you want to see what an outstanding program looks like, you can go to that URL. I have made it a bitly, so it's pretty easy for you to type in and see what Stephanie has done. I'm going to refer to some of her statistics here, but there are so much more. So one of the first things that school librarians do is collaborate with classroom teachers on learning projects. Now, research shows that learning increases when you have student-centered projects. And when you have each student working on a project, that kind of can be chaotic in the classroom. It helps to have the school librarian in there helping with individual student questions. In the slide presentation that Stephanie created, she had 140 lessons that she taught collaboratively this past school year. She also had 625 classes, used the Carney High School Library Learning Commons. Another thing school librarians do is we teach students to be good consumers of information. In an age of fake news, this is really important. Giving students strategies to be able to go out and decipher whether or not the information they are reading on the internet is true or false. We also teach students to be good digital citizens. These students are anonymous, and oftentimes, this can cause problems. So digital citizenship is a crucial part of our curricular education. School librarians are also responsible for teaching the NDE, English Language Arts Multiple Literacy Standards. School librarians are responsible, facilitate the school reading program. Establishing a culture of positive reading in the school is so important. In many schools, the school librarian is the technology integration specialist. And in many schools, the school librarian is an instructional leader who leads teacher professional development and the school improvement process. Now, now that you know what the librarian does, let's look at the research. And I have some research briefly there if you want to look at it. I also have at the bottom my contact information if you have any questions. Three studies I want to point out to you. Studies conducted in 23 states confirm the presence of an endorsed school librarian leads to a measurable, positive difference in student reading achievement scores. So school librarian correlates with increased reading scores. Data from more than 34 statewide studies suggests that students earn higher standardized test scores in schools that have a strong library program. Strong library program, increased standardized test scores. And finally, a national study using fourth grade reading scores documented that losses of school librarians are associated with declines or inferior gains in reading scores, while gains of librarians are associated with improved scores. Now that you know what the librarian does and what research says about their positive impact on academic achievement, you need to know what the librarian strives for. School librarians strive to teach skills that are essential to developing future-ready citizens. The role of the librarian, as indicated in the NDE approval rule as it is, describes a person who checks out books and supervises the library space. I tell you, if that's all the librarian does, they're way overpaid because a para can do that. So this is an antiquated vision of a school librarian. While certified librarians are excellent at matching student readers to excellent books, checking out books is far more important work. School librarians are teachers first and foremost. With that said, I urge the Nebraska School Board members to carefully consider the proposed accreditation policy that only requires a half-time school librarian in a district. I realize this will not be voted on today, but you must be informed of the potential negative impact on student academic achievement if school librarians are cut in force. Please make the requirement for accreditation the same as it was before. We need more school librarians, not less, if we want to keep our reading scores high and achievement scores competitive. We need to teach school administrators how to use their school librarian to make them an important member of the educators striving to increase student academic achievement. Now, I'd hope to ask for questions from you about this. And I was told that you don't take questions usually from the 10 minutes. So I just want, one of the questions that comes to me as a provider of teachers with their school library endorsement is there's just not enough of them out there. They, we just don't have enough people who are endorsed. Well, I can tell you one of the reasons why. This was an advertisement for a school librarian that came out in December of 2019. It was for the 2020-2021 school year. This school is accepting applications for a properly endorsed half-time school librarian position. Successful candidates must meet State of Nebraska certification requirements with library endorsement. Great idea. Duties include meeting yearly Rule 10 library requirements-
Time, sorry about-
Teaching appropriate age level-
Time.
Sorry, time.
Anyway, they did everything in there from the accounting and so on. It was a, it was a particular ad that I would qualify for, but my children would have to be starving for me to apply.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Mrs.
I do have two questions for, just point, two points of clarification. I'm sorry. So we got this great handout, and I know that you said there was a URL link at the top. Did you want to read that so that other people would know where to go to get this information?
Yes, this is Stephanie Green's slide presentation about what her school library has done this past school year. It is http://, it's a bitly, B-I-T dot L-Y, forward slash, Carney with a capital K, hi with a capital H, library with a capital L, and report with a capital R with no spaces.
And then my second question is, I know you didn't get to finish, but if you wanted to send us that advertisement that you were reading and didn't have an opportunity to, you could forward or email it to us as well so we can review it.
Okay, I would love to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jaclyn.
Board members, I have a copy of that advertisement. So you won't have to send it. I read it. Okay?
Any other questions? And I'm sorry I went over. I didn't quite see your one-minute.
Thank you, Judy. 2.2. We will now move to our public comment period. Those wishing to speak, sign in at the table outside of the meeting room. We have how many that signed in?
I believe we had 148 that signed in. We might not get to all of them. I'm just saying.
Okay, we have 148 public comment cards turned in, and the public will speak in the order the cards were handed. and the public will speak in the order the cards were handed out upon arrival. Point of clarification, Commissioner? Are all 148 on the health standards?
No, there, I believe there were six. I'm looking for a signal, yeah, six that were on other topics, I think primarily the library.
Okay.
And then the remainder, well, I assume anyway, were on health standards.
Pursuant to Board Policy B9, I move to limit public comment to 2 minutes per person to include the 6 individuals speaking on topics other than the health standards and the first 75 individuals speaking on the health standards. Joe, I have a second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion by the board? Lisa?
Madam Chair, if, I don't want to attempt to do the math, but if everybody had 2 minutes to speak, that would be how many hours? It does, because we have other business that is essential.
Almost five, almost 5 hours, and it would be 5 hours at least with space between. This is a board meeting. The board is deliberating. So it'd be almost 5 minutes, or 5 hours, I'm sorry.
And the last time we went, I believe, was 4 and 1/2 hours? Last time we were in Carney was 4 and 1/2 hours.
We gave 2 and 1/2 hours of speaking time, and they were right at 70 people that spoke 2 minutes each.
Okay.
And it was basically the same when it was in Lincoln, right at the same amount of time. Robin, did I see you want to speak?
I just wanted to say, from a consistency standpoint, this is exactly what we have done in the other, in the other 2 processes. And so I just think consistency and fairness to those who presented in our last 2 meetings.
Other board members have a comment? So the motion on the floor is, pursuant to Board Policy B9, I move to limit public comment to 2 minutes per person to include the 6 individuals speaking on topics other than the health standards and the first 75 individuals speaking on the health standards. Andrea, please call the roll.
I have a, sorry, I have a question, Maureen.
Oh.
I guess I'm, sorry, I should have addressed this earlier. I'm just, have people already indicated what their topics are that they are speaking on? Was that indicated for every person who signed in?
It's on the card to indicate. And so 6 people indicated that it was, I believe, on the library, the Rule 10 changes, and the rest, my understanding, is on health standards.
Okay, that was my question.
Andrea, please call the roll.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Fricki?
No.
Fricki?
No.
Cojones?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Neary? Tim? 5 yes, 1 no, 2 absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Members of this public will speak for 2 minutes each. I will announce the names of the next, of the next 8 speakers so that they are prepared to come forward. The first 8, and we have chairs up front. Yeah, come up to the front when your name is called. Okay. I'm going to do 6 in the first group so that the library standards can all... Pardon me? All those, okay, thank you. Okay.
Somebody needs to tell you guys that you are completely out of order here. You do not have the right to quiet our voice. You do not have the right to put these 6 library concerns ahead of over 100 other concerns.
You're out of order, sir. You're out of order.
This board does not report to the governor nor does it report to the legislature. They just asked for more comments that they hope that additionally, this many people...
You're out of order.
Sir. Ma'am. Can we go ahead? Please, we're gonna have to. We won't be able to get any done, and I just, we're really trying to do our best, and I think most people know that.
The board, this is our meeting, and we're doing the very best that we can to accommodate... First 6 people. Jeff Young. Amber Stevens. Alana Stevens. Marian Holstein. James Clark. And Gary Needham. Jeff Young. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm here to talk today about critical race theory. In the discussion of these standards and in the public conversation at large, the terms "critical race theory" or CRT and Marxism have been tossed around enough to lose most of their meaning. This board has confessed confusion around these terms as well, so I wanted to provide a brief overview to start. As you should know, Marxism was a socio-economic theory that effectively sought to reallocate power and wealth from the haves to the have-nots, and which was characterized primarily by class struggle. Karl Marx envisioned a society in which the working class would rise up, overthrow the ruling class, and government would no longer exist. Classic Marxism was adopted into 2 major systems of government, communism and socialism. Decades later, critical theory emerged as the next evolution of Marxism. Critical theory sought the same basic goals of overthrowing power, but expanded the number of group identities to be considered into an approach that was significantly broader than simply economic classes. Critical race theory began to rise in America in the 1980s, again advancing the same Marxist agenda, but this time with a focus on race or skin color rather than economics. The effects of this worldview are too widespread to cover in a 2-minute comment period. However, the board can review and educate itself with relative ease if it chooses to do so. The bottom line is that critical theory judges and ranks individuals based entirely upon group characteristics and attendant stereotypes. It explains human behavior as a foregone result of membership in various groups and devalues both individual responsibility and individual achievement. It is, by objective measures, the most bigoted, divisive, and racist worldview in existence today. And whether this board acknowledges it or not, it is dripping from both these standards and this body's ever-more radical approach to education as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Amber Stevens? Thank you, Amber.
Maureen.
I'm sorry, Jacinda.
I'm so sorry, and I know that this is your role. So we did not make a statement at the beginning about applause, and I do think that that's important to address at this time.
Do you want to address this? Hold on, Amber.
Again, just for the good of the order, just try, try not to do those outright expressions, right? We've gone through some things already this morning, and it's a little tough for us to maintain our focus as best we can. And I just, that's all I ask, just a little bit of that regard. Thank you.
Welcome, Amber.
Thank you. My name is Amber Stevens, and I'm here today to talk about trauma-informed schools and how it relates to critical race theory. 9 years ago, we adopted 2 children from the foster care system. They have significant developmental trauma and are also black. I stand here as a representation of thousands of children and their families across Nebraska who have experienced developmental trauma in their young lives. The long-term effects of this type of trauma on young children is damaging. And even if they get adopted into loving families, the trauma stays. They spew their internal chaos all over the family, leaving destruction in their wake. PTSD for adoptive moms is normal, and divorce is common among these families as well. These families also face horrors such as suicide and sexual abuse. These families, like mine, are helpless. There is no help for us, no respite, no mental health services that actually work. It truly takes a village to raise these children, and school is a vital part of that village. We rely on teachers to help us parent our children. They are crucial to our network of support. When I see schools trying to be trauma-informed, training teachers, giving children the ACEs test, changing harmful practices, communicating with parents, and doing all they can to help families like mine, I rejoice at that. So when I saw a letter from the NDE Commissioner saying that they were going to treat racism as trauma, I knew I had to come today to advocate for families like mine. To say that experiencing a microaggression or even full-on racist experience, which we actually have, is the same as experiencing developmental attachment trauma is not only a gross understatement, it also completely invalidates all the experiences that my children have gone through regarding their early childhood trauma. If you move trauma-informed care away from helping those children who have developmental trauma, you are telling families like mine that they don't matter, their children don't matter, and that their village is no longer advocating for them. Critical race theory is a danger to transracial families and especially to the vulnerable children who have experienced attachment trauma. I have researched extensively into tell black children that they are victims to white children is dangerous. It pulls threads out of the very fabric of families like mine who are not only transracial, but are trying to overcome the effects of developmental trauma. If my black children heard that their own white parents are oppressing them as well as their white siblings, why should they keep trying to bond with us? All of our work, our hard work over the years can be obliterated because of CRT. Please do not do this. You are leaving vulnerable families like mine to cast along the wayside, which does nothing to help the black children who reside in these families.
Thank you, Amber. And Amber, your documents will be sent to each of the board members. Thank you. Alana? Stevens? Welcome, Alana.
I'm Eliana Stevens, and I'm 11 years, 12 years old. I came here on my own to talk to you about critical race theory from a kid's point of view. These are my own words and feelings, not my mom's. I have 2 black siblings, and they are in 2 different school systems in Nebraska. I don't think it's right to teach my siblings that I don't love them because they're black. By teaching that, you're not only destroying everything that we've ever taught them about relationships, but you're also telling them that one race is better than the other. And so we're just going back to thinking that one type of race is better than the other. It's not good to be separated into groups because of our different thoughts or opinions or skin color. We're all equals, and we have been created equal. So why should we try to divide ourselves? It makes one group of people feel more powerful than the other. At least this backs Nazi Germany, when people were turning on their Jewish friends because they were Jewish. I'm not saying it's going to get there, but it might. And we should fight against this while it's not that big of a deal. We don't want to end up like Germany did, divided and weak. According to the chart I found being taught in California schools, a white man is an oppressor only because he's a man and he's white. Are you saying that the white men on this board are oppressors? Even though I'm a female, and according to the critical race theory, I'm in an oppressed group. I, but I feel no oppression, because I know that nobody can do anything to me as long as I hold my head up and not stand down to somebody who wants to push me down. If we're saying I'm oppressed as a girl, then how am I standing here right now talking to you? People who are truly oppressed, like the Jews in Germany, didn't have the opportunity to speak like I am. I am not oppressed.
Thank you. Welcome, Marion.
Thank you. The Nebraska Indian Education Association acknowledges the original inhabitants of this place, the Pawnee, the Oto, the Missoura, the Ponka, and the Omaha people, who since time immemorial hunted fish, gathered, and were stewards of these lands. For native peoples, the spiritual ties to Mother Earth transcend human frailties, the need to have personal ownership, or the need to take more from Mother Earth than give and back. President Nichols, board members, and Commissioner Blumstedt, my name is Marian Holstein, and I am the Executive Director of the Nebraska Indian Education Association. We exist to support all Nebraskas in learning the accurate history of the indigenous peoples of this continent. For example, the majority of Americans do not know the influence of the Iroquois Confederacy and the Great Law of Peace that was the foundation of the US Constitution. Senator Mike Lee's book from Utah, written out of history, shares stories about Kanasatoga, an Iroquois chief whose words taught Benjamin Franklin the basic principles behind separation of powers. Details on how Benjamin Franklin studied with the Iroquois may be found in UNO alumnus Bruce Johansson's book, Forgotten Founders. In addition to learning about governance strategies from indigenous people, they also learned about military strategies that were used in the American Revolution. I'm pleased, I'm pleased to announce and invite everyone to the National Indian Education Association's annual conference in Omaha, October 13 through 16. annual conference in Omaha, October 13 through 16. In Nebraska, we are developing an indigenous institute to support frontline staff in schools across Nebraska as they teach about indigenous people.
Time. Thank you, Marion. James Clark. Welcome, James.
Thank you. I'm not here to talk about the libraries. I did sign up to talk about the libraries. I'm here to talk about your performance. I'm here to talk about the Nebraska Department of Education performance. It seems to me we're trying to reinvent the wheel here, and a wheel only works if it's round, doesn't have any flat spots, and it's well-balanced. I don't see these recommendations, these standards, as being well-balanced. They do not serve the majority. I spoke with my state senator this morning. He says he has the ear of the governor. He says these standards, these recommendations, this type of narrative is going to be taken up by our legislature. I applaud that. The states of Idaho, Oklahoma, Georgia, Tennessee, Texas have all passed legislation to ban this type of stuff in our public schools. The states of North Carolina, Arizona, Louisiana, Iowa, Missouri, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, and West Virginia have bills pending. You people need to look at yourselves in the mirror. You need to really think about what you're doing here. You work for us. This venue is paid for by us, and all of your expenses are being compensated by Nebraska taxpayer dollars. I support, and I will encourage, any and all petitions to remove each and every one of you from your board positions.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Gary? Gary Needham? Gary Needham? Welcome, Gary.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The State Board of Education and Nebraska Department of Education, I believe, are reaching beyond their authority and showing a disregard for citizens of the state. They've initiated this posture in current board position statements and have extended it most recently in approval accreditation accountability rules. After outlining the NDE constitutional responsibilities in Position Statement S2, the board states, "Beyond this authority, the State Board seeks to ensure the education system, including the Nebraska Department of Education, is taking charge of its roles and responsibilities to provide leadership and enhance support systems in the state." Clearly, through that, the board is saying that they're willing to step outside their authority, defining this overreach as leadership in an attempt to dictate sweeping reforms. Combined with current federal education regulations, local control boards will virtually disappear and undermine both the Nebraska and state constitutions, removing freedom from the classroom and making it nearly impossible for youth to be capable American citizens. As responsible adult officials and elected representatives, when we're faced with a choice between the Constitution and the regulations, our responsibility is to choose the Constitution. Unfortunately, with the time restrictions, I cannot expand on this statement more verbally, but written statements were submitted. I would like to provide a contrast to this thinking. Early in my career, Allen November challenged me with a talk entitled "Who Owns the Learning?" and his point was that only when students take ownership of their learning would they actually perform to their potential. The current board position statements and rules have made it clear that NDE will own the learning and that local boards will not, and local schools will not, have the authority they have had in the past. I appreciate your time, and I would appreciate a different philosophy in your next draft of the revision process.
Thank you, Gary. The next group. Ashley Jarman. Kami Riley. Paul Hazard. Amy Martinez. Jenna Dur. I'm not sure, I'm having a hard time reading the spelling. Katie McClemmons. Riley Ross. Dr. Sue Greenwald. Ashley. Welcome, Ashley.
Hello, I am Ashley Jarman. I stand here to insist that you do not create statewide health standards based on current Nebraska legislation. The legislature already has Statute 79712, Health Education. This statute states that provisions shall be made by the proper local school authorities for instructing the pupils in a comprehensive health education. Thus, creating a statewide standard is in violation. The creation of statewide health standards goes against Statutes 79701 and 7976001. These statutes dictate that schools teach reading, writing, mathematics, science, and social studies. Statewide health standards would directly violate the above-mentioned state statutes. It also disregards Statute 79725, the duty of teachers. This statute says teachers are to present instruction with special emphasis to common honesty, morality, courtesy, obedience to law, respect for the national flag, the United States Constitution, and the Constitution of Nebraska, respect for parents and the home, the dignity and necessity of honest labor, and other lessons of a studying influence which tend to promote and develop an upright and desirable citizenry. As well, standards are to be measurable. The only conceivable way to measure the understanding of the following proposed health standards would be show graphic images, starting in kindergarten. How does teaching HE 871D develop a plan to eliminate unintended pregnancy, uphold morality, or respect for the parents and the home? The State Board of Education has not been charged to create such a standard; it has been charged to ensure the teaching of reading, writing, mathematics, science, and social studies. Creating a statewide health standard is in violation of Nebraska law and against your directive.
Thank you, Ashley. Kami Riley.
I believe I'm next.
I called your name.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
You could not hear it.
Okay.
With the applause, thank you.
I'm Kami Riley from Norfolk. I want to talk to you today, I want to approach this just a little bit differently. We're just starting this today, and I need you guys to really hear me. You look at us and you say you're listening. I get it. But are you learning from us? These people have spent countless hours of their time. They could have been doing many other things and needed to be doing other things in their families. They have taken the time to learn what CRT is. Do not tell us that it is not involved and just ignore everything. It is involved. I sent you emails, as I'm sure everybody here has, asking you questions. I asked what critical race theory was. Nobody got back to me, except two people. And the response that, nobody answered the question, first of all. The response that I did get was from Robin Stevenson, Stevens, excuse me, thank you very much for answering. You admitted, "I have not done a massive amount of research on CRT. Most of my limited research was found online." Okay, thank you. You don't know what CRT is. I appreciate that. I appreciate your honesty. I'm assuming that the rest of you are probably in the same position? If you aren't, if you know it, then have dialogue with us. Tell us what you know. If you're not answering our questions by email, we're going to assume you don't know. And how can you be in the position to make these decisions if you're not fully knowledgeable? So, please, put on your learning caps today. Do your research, okay? You are not being disrespectful to us by not. You have to do this. I had also sent a video to watch.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Hazard.
Well, thanks, guys. Hey, you know, there was a great comment that was made earlier, and I think it was by Patsy. You said, "You don't ever see groups like this." And I come from a law enforcement community, and in the law enforcement community, we call that a clue, okay? That's not a shot. It's not a shot. It's the truth. I'm a father of three. I'm a proud resident of Kearney. I'm a former member of law enforcement, the best men and women I know. Ms. Nichols, this is your district. Pay attention. Last time I focused on pedophiles, and this is absolutely a pedophile's dream. It is. But you know what? That's on record. I'm not going to go there this time. Last time I sent an email to all of you, I received one response from Mr. Stevens. I appreciate that, one. And his response actually got me thinking because he said, "Are you saying that speakers should actually identify who they are?" Uh, yeah, I am. There was two speakers that spoke, and they laid out an entire resume last time when they spoke. And their resume was everything they've accomplished. Pretty good stuff. Conveniently left out, they're on the list of people giving input for this recommendation. Who are they? Liam Herten-Rodriguez. Please look up his bio. You will see. Activist. You guaranteed me there was no activists involved, Mr. Stevens. Please look up Abby Swatsworth, she's in OutNebraska. She spoke, conveniently left that out. Mr. Commissioner, you wrote an email to the State Department of Education, or to the Department of Educators and to the superintendents, supporting a website that redirects people to 1619 for the critical race theory. And it wasn't until last month that you updated your website to have it show, "Full disclosure, we don't necessarily endorse all these," but for a year you did. So, I bring this full circle to say this, okay? So, you can't manipulate the truth, because if you didn't know the speakers that were speaking last time, that's a problem. You should know who wrote these standards or who input. And if you did, you acted like you didn't. So, stand up if you want this gone. Not another amendment. Stand up if you want this gone.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Amy Martinez. Welcome, Amy. Welcome.
My name is Amy Martinez. I'm a mother of two and also a physician assistant. On May 7, 2021, this board listened to a second round of public comment related to the first draft of the newly-proposed health education standards being considered for adoption in the state of Nebraska. Many members of the public are here yet today to offer another round of comment. While we understand we are still talking about Draft One, this board has promised and is required to take public comment into account in developing these standards. And while individual standards may change, most of the comments I've heard made to this body have been generally applicable to the purpose and the direction of the proposed standards and will presumably remain applicable to the second draft absent major revision. Even so, major revision is what is required, and we appreciate the opportunity to come back here and your commitment to actually hearing the voices and the concerns of your constituents, rather than simply performing your duties outside the public eye. During the last hearing, various board members expressed confusion over comments from citizens concerned about the use of comprehensive sexuality education, or CSE, and critical race theory, CRT, in your public schools. Repeatedly, members of this body asked where those phrases appear within these standards, as if confused about the source of the concerns being expressed. It's unclear whether this board's confusion stems from its inability to conceive of the natural consequences of the standards it adopts, its willingful ignorance of both the consequences and the origin of the standards, or blatant intellectual dishonesty in refusing to publicly acknowledge what is abundantly clear to thousands of Nebraskans that have followed this process so far. For elected officials in the state of Nebraska entrusted with our great responsibilities for the state's most valuable resource, our children, none of these alternatives are acceptable. However, it is our sincerest hope that this purported confusion stems from a simple lack of research and not more serious misconduct related to the public trust.
Thank you, Amy. Jenna Dur. Jenna?
Thank you.
Welcome, Jenna.
Thanks. My name is Jenna Dur, and I'm a physician and a mom. Today, I speak on behalf of Protect Nebraska Children Coalition. We are a grassroots coalition of more than 15,000 members in Nebraska, and we represent the interests of tens of thousands of Nebraska families. And the numbers are growing. Our mission is no secret; it's in our name. This coalition is comprised of members from all different walks of life, and we are not a political entity. We are moms and dads, neighbors and concerned citizens, united in the belief that our children are worth the fight, and that our schools should be institutes of learning instead of recruitment grounds for indoctrination into a particular worldview. We are Nebraska. Our coalition stands for children and for the protection of their safety, health, and innocence. We believe families are the building block of our society, and that parents remain the primary educators of their children. We believe in protecting the fundamental rights of parents to direct the education, healthcare, and upbringing of their children because we believe that is what ensures the best interests of our children are protected. We want our children to be educated with curriculum methods that are accurate, developmentally appropriate, peer-reviewed, and effective at improving education outcomes. We believe that Nebraska has great teachers and capable children that, when properly equipped, are able to rise to the biggest challenges in life with confidence. We want our children and every child in the state to have the opportunity to attend a public school where they will be taught to excel in all areas of academia, free from the pervasive influence played by politics in the world at large. Specifically, because of all the things we stand for, we stand firmly against the radicalization of health education standards in a manner that elevates social theory and ideological positioning to the same level as actual truth and well-established science. We stand against the sexualization of our children from a young age and the encouragement to ignore biology in the favor of controversial and fluid social constructs of gender. We stand against the overt focus on sexuality at the expense of core competencies, and we will stand strong. Thank you.
Katie McClemmons. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you. Good morning, board. Before I get to my prepared comment, I do just want to address a couple of things. The first is this. I know I and many others, Commissioner Bloomstead, would love an explanation as to why when two special appearances could have been granted, only one was granted. I know Protect Nebraska Children did apply for one, as well as many other speakers and organizations, and so we'd love an explanation for that decision. The other thing I'd like to address is during board discussion prior to public comment, it seems as though the focus is on Draft Two, and I can appreciate that. We, as a public, have Draft One. So, when you hear statements about Draft One, do not disregard that we are talking about standards. If standards, any standard in Draft One that leads to CSE or CRT is on Draft Two, then these statements apply to Draft Two. My name is Katie McClemmons. I'm an educator and concerned parent. Today, I also speak on behalf of the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition. We believe that children in all schools should strive to be safe and inclusive to all students, and that each student should be provided with the same opportunities for success without regard to their race, nationality, sex, lifestyle, or political belief. We are engaged citizens, parents, educators, grandparents, medical doctors, subject matter experts, attorneys, clergy, and business owners. We speak for thousands, tens of thousands, of Nebraskans who will no longer stand by silently as our education system is subtly transformed from an institution of math, science, English, and history to a recruitment field for social change through radical political agendas. For too long, this board has operated in relative obscurity, almost to the point of being able to propose and pass standards that are abhorrent to most citizens of Nebraska. But we see the trajectory, and we are moved to action because politics have no function in ensuring our children are well-educated in safe learning environments. Yet, the agenda of this board appears to be driven by political ideologies under the guise of education, but no more. We are watching now and stand ready to ensure the public is aware of the actions taken within this body. Unlike the standards under review, we are Nebraska, and our voices will be heard. We will not waver, we will not surrender, and we will not be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Riley? Riley Ross? Riley?
I wasn't.
Riley? I have Riley Ross. Welcome, Riley.
Good morning, Board of Education members. Your role in the NDE is vital, valued, and essential to the public school system. I believe that God has appointed each of you for such a time as this, and there are many that pray that you operate in wisdom and listen to sound counsel during this time. I'm grateful for all the people in this room and behind the scenes who have dedicated the education and raising of our children, continuing that you take into account the spiritual, mental, and emotional help of our children in writing these standards. There are many that acknowledge that there is no authority except that which has been ordained for God. He rules and reigns over all. So, Lord, I pray for Robin. I pray for Patricia Johns. I pray for Lisa. I pray for Patty, for Jaclyn, for Maureen, for Deborah, and Matthew. The way these decisions are more than you can handle. I ask that you have a clear picture of the gospel. Actually, you will receive a stark revelation of truth, and I pray this truth set you free from the wait, from the worry, and the opinions of everyone else in this world. When you are tired and weary, take on an easy yoke and a light burden as they yield to you, as you are visited and spoken to in times when stress and pressure at its highest. as you are visited and spoken to in times when stress and pressure at its highest. I am asking for Holy Spirit-inspired drafting and given dreams and visions in times when you're not expecting it. We understand here in this room that our battle is not against you. So we bless you and we honor you for listening with your ear and opening your heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Dr. Sue Greenwald? Dr. Sue Greenwald? Welcome, Dr. Sue.
Welcome to Kearney. My name is Dr. Sue Greenwald. I'm a pediatrician and a grandma. The transgender lifestyle is being sold to kids for profit. Clinics as well as online providers that serve multiple states continue to pop up like the hottest new trend. Surgeons and physicians are being schooled in transgenderism. Political figures and the entire education system are pushing it as though switching gender is glamorous and fun. And they're making a killing financially. The taxpayers are paying the price through Medicaid and Obamacare mandated insurance payments. Cross-gender hormones are one of the biggest moneymakers because once you get a young child on these hormones, it becomes a lifetime for them of medicine, doctor appointments and blood tests. They cannot stop the hormones. In 2016, Planned Parenthood was offering hormone therapy in only a few of its clinics, but within three years, it became the second-largest provider in the United States. They are sterilizing thousands while profiting, including billions of dollars in government grants. Hospitals are also driving the industry. The Boston Children Hospital advises, advertises that it serves ages three and up with their hormone therapy and surgeries. The Nebraska Medical Center advertises full service for all ages and genders. One wonders how many genders they serve. In the U.S., there are approximately 50 clinics offering cross-gender hormone treatments specifically for children and adolescents, not adults. For adults, there are probably 50 clinics in some states. I looked up Texas and in one city, there were five clinics where you could get your hormones. Other financial backing of this lucrative depopulation industry has come from Big Pharma, who's profiting directly, and foundations with names such as Clinton, Gates, Soros, Buffett and Pritzker, among others. I predict that this will exceed the OxyContin for profit scandal.
Thank you. I indicated earlier that we would take a break at 10:30, but we're going to do eight more before we take our break.
If you're in favor of these standards, if you're in authority, obviously.
Judy Dur. Daryl Carr. Justin Teal. Roxanne Tillotson. Brad Richter. Mike Meyer. Paul Fredericks.
Gay people have rights. Black people have rights. Transgender people have rights. You guys, a total of three of us are here for equality.
All right. Stop.
Amen, brother.
Board, we're going to take a break right now. We're going to go ahead with our break. Justin Teal. Roxanne Tillotson. Brad Richter. Mike Meyer. Paul Fredericks. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. My name is Mark Bonkowitz. I'm a retired farmer from the Sidney, Nebraska area. I'm a father and grandfather. I want to address the confusion this board has shown in its questions, responses and publications since Draft 1 has been released. There has been explicit denial by the board that Draft 1 had comprehensive sexuality education, or CSE, included in it. The board must understand what the tens of thousands of Nebraskans are referring to when we say that CSE is part of the proposed standards. I will read just four standards. First grade for six-year-olds, HE172D. Define gender, gender identity and gender role stereotypes. So right away, for six-year-olds, you're going to confuse them with medically inaccurate information? Fifth grade for 10-year-olds, HE573E. Explain the significance of the physical changes in puberty and the potential role of hormone blockers on young people who identify as transgender. Why would we introduce the concept of hormone blockers to 10-year-olds? Sixth grade for 11-year-olds, HE671E. Identify factors that are important in deciding whether and when to engage in sexual behaviors. What? A teacher would be strategizing sexual decisions with their 11-year-old students? That is shocking and not even legal. Nebraska age of consent is 16 years of age and it has to be with someone 19 years of age and older. Seventh grade for 12-year-olds, HE771E. Define vaginal, oral or anal sex and their relationship to STD and HIV transmissions. Children go through puberty at different stages and have different maturities. This leaves no room for customization and the exposure of these concepts to children. Parents should be handling these sensitive subjects, not the school. Thank you.
Judy Dur?
Thank you, Mark.
Good morning. My name is Judy Dur. I'm here to oppose the proposed standards. These standards would lead to developmentally inappropriate curriculum and lessons which would only hurt our students' social, emotional and physical health. I want to share with you a story. On behalf of a Northeast Nebraska parent who has to remain anonymous, recently, a four-year-old little girl was told by her preschool teacher that, well, girls can be boys and boys can be girls and this little girl got into trouble and was reprimanded for looking under her classmates' dress during school. And when her, when her mother asked her about this, she simply said, "I wanted to know if she and, if she and her classmate matched." She was confused and she was worried. This little girl was given medically inaccurate information posing as education and was shamed and embarrassed when natural curiosity and confusion followed. Passing on any number of the harmful standard included, standards included in the NDE's first draft will work to constrain local school boards and embolden some teachers such as these, of course not all, who would use their classroom for indoctrination on the current sexual and political trends rather than medical facts and developmentally appropriate healthy choices. We must not forget where passing these standards would lead. In 2009, Oregon implemented similar standards throughout the grade levels and subject matters in Oregon today. There are third graders being told they can change their sex, middle school students being advised on how to stop the onset of puberty with hormone blockers and in some cases, female students being transported from school property to receive the first dose of a chemical abortion, all without parental knowledge or consent. The stakeholders in Nebraska are not ignorant. They are aware, awake and watching and will not allow the innocence of our children to be sacrificed. Contrary to the current narrative, we are on the side of compassion. We are on the side of age and developmental appropriateness. We are on the side of scientific evidence and facts and we are on the side of medical accuracy. We urge you to not move forward with these proposals. Thank you for your service and for your time.
Thank you, Judy. Daryl Carr? Welcome, Daryl.
Hi, my name is Daryl Carr. As she says, I am a very concerned grandpa. My grandkids are precious and pure. The Bible has been taken out of schools already. Now I stand against the infiltration of political agendas into our classrooms. The vast majority of public comments offered in support of these standards has, have focused on issues related to reducing sexual assault and domestic violence. These issues are important and should be items of concern to this board. Unfortunately, the currently proposed standards are not reasonably calculated to achieve these goals and claiming that they have been drafted for that purpose is incredibly misleading. In effect, this board has asked the public to focus only on the one or two individual standards that promote the health and safety of our children and ignore the multitude of standards that are premised upon controversial, unscientific and politically-charged ideologies. This is unacceptable. This board has claimed that it's here to listen, that the public comment period is taken seriously and will play into the decision process on what standards, if any, should be adopted. At the same time, this board has released clarification points in an apparent effort to discredit the, the opposition to the standards. The board member from District 7, despite concerns voiced by fellow board members.
Time. Thank you, Daryl. Justin Teal?
As the previous gentleman was trying to articulate, the board crossed the line when it decided to issue a document designed to discredit valid opposition to the proposed standards. Even more egregious, at least one of the members of the board went even further by proactively sending out his thoughts in defense of this draft to local newspapers across his district. In that letter, as in multiple emails sent to concerned constituents, this board member doubled down on the points set forth by the points of clarification document. He then went further stating, and I quote, "I do not know where these thoughts are coming from, but whatever individual or organization is spreading these false narratives, they need to stop. It continues to cause division that is harmful to all of us." End quote. Additionally, towards the end of the last month's board meeting, another board member referenced churches, not once but twice, as sources of misinformation. These statements from public officials are simply unacceptable. It is tantamount to outright suppression of citizens by a government official. To these board members and to others, it will certainly become evident throughout this process that the false narratives you find so discouraging are grounded in documented truth. The divisions among us existed before the public comments came in on these standards and they will continue to exist as long as the public bodies like this one persist in ignoring and discounting opposing viewpoints without due consideration. The most egregious harm, however, is this board's attempt to strife meaningful public participation. This is a favorite tactic of authoritarian governments in Third World countries and propaganda campaigns engaged in by fascist regimes to vilify and disenfranchise the opposition of free citizens. These tactics have no place in Nebraska and certainly have no place in the board that sets the direction for the education of our children. See you in August.
Roxanne Tillotson? Roxanne Tillotson? Welcome, Roxanne.
Thank you. Yes, as I said, my name is Roxanne Tillotson and I am here today to oppose Draft 1 and any draft of proposed standards that includes radical sex standards or the divisive racial equality standards. I oppose these themes in any draft that might be prescribed because I want all children in Nebraska protected from premature exposure to explicit topics and want to promote familial jurisdiction over sensitive and politically-charged social issues. Believing all students and families should be treated with respect is not political. We can all agree that all people should be treated with respect because they are human and humankindness must dictate our daily lives. However, to say that views on LGBTQ issues and traditional family values are not politicized would be wholly inaccurate as evidenced by the two major parties' political platforms. No school staff or any public school should seek to indoctrinate students towards one side of any political issue. Let's consider standard HE372A. Demonstrate ways to promote dignity and respect for people of all genders, gender expressions and gender identities, including other students, their family members and members of the school community. On the surface, this standard sounds good. However, inherent in the standard is the application that teachers will be instructing students in how to view the issues embedded within this standard. The issue of sexual deviancy versus traditional sexual views. This does not allow the student's right to make a value judgment for him or herself. Plus, it would violate the parent's responsibility. Parents, not teachers, have the ultimate responsibility to direct their child's worldview. Teaching respect and kindness is where state indoctrination should end. Love, respect and kindness can exist aside of, outside of perfect agreement. This is exactly why the Code of Ethics for teachers in the state of Nebraska prohibits school staff from using their position to indoctrinate students into one political worldview. The standards come from the NDE. Should not violate this Code of Ethics. To do so would be unethical.
Time. Thank you, Roxanne. Brad Richter?
Excuse me. My, my name is Brad Richter. I'd like to address the first portion of a statement from the propaganda document put forth by the commissioner on May 7. Specifically, and I quote, "The proposed draft of the Nebraska Health Standards Education Standards is not a mandate from the federal government." End quote. I don't know who has stated it was a federal mandate. Personally, I'm not aware of the government has a mandate of such standards. But this begs the question, if the federal governor is not behind, driver behind the agenda, then who is? Why doesn't Nebraska Department of Education feel the need to move for the current framework to create unnecessary health standards? Who wants the types of standards? Whose agenda is being promoted? Perhaps the answer to our question lies within the state-stated agenda of PSYCHUS, which is, I quote, "Sex ed for social change." Additionally, this board has protested any characterization these standards have been written from the evolved political activism, instead pointing to owner list of writers. However, while plagiarism may be the best form of flattery, it nearly always leads the trail and it certainly did in this case. A close review of the Draft 1 reveals 36 of the line items were effectively copied and pasted from the National Sex Standard, Education Standard drafted and promoted by PSYCHUS, whose tagline is the very definition of activist organization. Among its goals are explicitly to make people have a right to comprehensive sexual education, achieve social justice, inclusive of sexual and reproductive rights. PSYCHUS also aims to reshape culture and their social narratives of sexuality and sex and reproductive health and is actively working to dismantle the system of power. Not only is PSYCHUS an activist organization, it is made up of and supported by additional activist organizations such as Advocates for Use, Answer, Planned Parenthood and GLICEN, among others. This is who is responsible drafting, for drafting objectionable health standards, whether direct or because the writing team copied and pasted the standards. What's worse, however, is that the Nebraska standards sprint past PSYCHUS standards in being even more explicit, anti-sanct.
Time.
And woke scolding. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Mike Meyer? Welcome, Mike.
First of all, for all of you that have a number that you fear you won't be able to talk to these guys and that's not to let you off the hook, but we're going to record you outside so you can get on record, okay? Um, you're throwing me a curveball because I was ready to time all the times you were gabbling us down like last time and dressed you down for it. Doggone it, now I had to come up with something on the, on the, on the fly. John Adams has one of my favorite quotes of a founding father. "Our constitution is wholly inadequate for other than a moral and a religious people." CSE and CRT is a demonic plot to teach out morality from our children. I wish you would reconsider even considering it. There's, I couldn't agree with the police officer more. There is no place for a consideration of this is horrible. I yield the rest of my time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Paul Fredericks?
My name is Paul Fredericks and I would like to address a statement written by the commissioner from the May 7 NDE meeting. And I quote, "The proposed draft of Nebraska health standards was not written by an activist. A writing team of Nebraska educators were selected to submit applications. The list of Nebraska educators participating on the writing team has been made publicly available." End quote. After review of the writing process, there's been significant concern regarding transparency. Indeed, when this was discussed amongst the board members and the commissioner at the last NDE meeting, no one seemed to know or to be able clearly explain the process or whether any venting was done. More to the point, there is no transparency to how many people applied to be writers, the selection criteria, other than school size, and whether contempt or belief-based bias was perpetuated by design. Furthermore, what was the role of the subject matter experts in the process and what feedback did they provide? Obviously, the writing team did not draft the most objectionable standards from scratch as evidenced by the repeated instances of language copied and pasted from the National Sex Education Standards, which by the way, were put together by proudly activist organizations, one of which literally touts social change through sex education as its driving principle. I'd like to remind the commissioners and the board that according to the Oxford Advanced Learner's Dictionary, activism is defined as the activity of working to achieve political or social change, especially as a member of an organization with particular aims. An activist in turn is a person who campaigns to bring about political or social change or, stated another way, one who advocates or practices activism. During the writing, did the writing team plug in the National Sex Education Standard language? language into Nebraska's Draft One, or was that done by someone else? By whose direction? More importantly, aren't all these questions to the board should be asking instead defending draft standards which allow and defend propaganda like the Points of Clarification? Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. The next eight speakers. Angie Klein, Neil Dutenhofer, Kip Van Winkle, Ronna Fredericks, Dr. Tim Stratton, Richard Turner, Teresa Cook, and Nan Kino.
I'd like to make one point of order that we believe-
Angie Klein.
-that this meeting is in violation of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, as Section 84-1412 says-
You're out of order. Are you Angie? Are you Angie? Angie Klein. Welcome, Angie.
Good morning. I am Angie Klein from Bellevue, Nebraska. And today I want to be very personal with you. I'm a former homosexual. I lived in a lesbian relationship for many years, and today I stand before you as a changed woman. I am married to a man. I have children, and I'm very fulfilled. When I struggled with the feelings and emotions that constantly bombarded my mind while I was living as a lesbian, I am thankful I did not encounter a curriculum indoctrination that would have kept me caught in something that is known to increase mental distress or mental illness. I didn't grow up with a sex education that allowed kindergartners to decide what sex they wanted to be, contrary to what their biological sex was. I didn't grow up in a time when I was fed the lie that being a tomboy was not something normal and being forced to identify as a male because I loved dirt more than I loved dresses. I'm so glad in my health class in high school I did not have to struggle with thoughts that maybe my sexual orientation needed to be explored with another girl. All these things are proposed in your first draft of the new health curriculum standards. I know many people that have embraced a homosexual lifestyle, and I have transgender friends that have transitioned to the other sex and then transitioned back to their biological sex. Most of my friends who have embraced homosexuality, male and female, all have lifelong health consequences from embracing this lifestyle. Some of them will never have children. And all my transgender friends who took puberty blockers will never have kids. All of them will never have kids because they are now sterile. Yet we want to say to young children, choose your gender, choose your sex, and we will help you achieve the next goal, and that is puberty blockers. I plead with the board this morning, do the homework before promoting this destructive curriculum in our classrooms. I've studied the CSE for over two years now. I come from a very liberal state of Minnesota, and I've seen this thing in action. Ask yourselves, would you want your kids, your grandchildren partaking in this curriculum? Our legacy is our children, and we must protect them.
Neil. 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 Neil Dutenhofer. Neil. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Neil Dutenhofer, and I'm a business owner and father of nine. When I read the Commissioner's handout from the May 7th board meeting, I was confused because instead of directly addressing the most controversial standards in question, he instead chose to list positive themes included in Draft One. I quote, "The proposed draft does include the knowledge and skills related to sexual abuse prevention, dating violence prevention, and body safety education. The proposed draft does include content to help students develop healthy behaviors, decisions, and skills with an emphasis on increasing protective factors and reducing risks," end quote. These statements sound great, and I think most people can support the prevention of sexual abuse and dating violence. We can also agree that developing healthy behaviors, decisions, and skills are noble goals. So I'm really glad that the health standards have some positive themes. But it also includes radical, anti-science, political ideologies, age inappropriate, inappropriate information, and invites curricula with an obscene, explicit, and over-sexualized approach. Let's read several of these objectionable standards. First grade for six-year-olds, define gender, gender identity, and gender role stereotypes. Third grade for eight-year-olds, demonstrate ways to promote dignity and respect for people of all genders, gender expressions, and gender identities, including other students, their family members, and members of the school community. Fourth grade for nine-year-olds, differentiate between sexual orientation and gender identity. Fifth grade for ten-year-olds, explain that gender expression and gender identity exist along a spectrum. Explain the significance of the physical changes in puberty and the potential role of hormone blockers on young people who identify as transgender. And finally, define and explain, for eleven-year-olds, differences between cisgender, transgender, gender non-binary, gender expansive, gender identity confusion. These are some of the standards you must address. Your reassurances are patronizing at best and suspect at worst.
Time. Thank you, Neil. Kip Van Winkle. Kip Van Winkle.
Good morning.
Welcome, Kip.
Hello. My name is Kip Van Winkle. I am an elementary, I'm a local elementary teacher and father of six. According to the May 7th propaganda sheet written by the Commissioner, I quote, "The proposed draft of the Nebraska Health Standard Education Standards does seek to promote dignity, respect, kindness, and compassion through equitable health education for all Nebraskan students," end quote. This sounds so good, but through the lens of critical thinking, Nebraskans can see these proposed standards are truly unable to accomplish such lofty and noble goals. First, let it be noted that desirable outcomes of dignity, respect, kindness, and compassion are already being addressed in the character development programs available through anti-bullying curriculums implemented in Nebraska schools. Second, the health standards do not meet desirable outcomes for the following reasons. Dignity is not shown to students, families, and teachers who do not wish to adopt the activist values promoted to these standards. Dignity is robbed from students with varying sexual awareness as they, along with all their classmates, are introduced to sexually explicit ideas and images prematurely. This robs a child of his or her childhood with no consent from the student. Respect for individual students and families' personal beliefs rooted in culture, religion, and experience is disregarded in these standards. Respect for vulnerability of developing children under the influence of adults is deemed inconsequential by these proposed standards. It is not kind to sexualize children early in light of the research and scientific data that demonstrates measurable harm perpetrated on children when trusted adults expose them to explicit sexual material beyond their cognitive and emotional maturation. It is cruel, not compassionate, to create a situation within the classroom where students have been previously abused will be triggered to relive their previous trauma. And as a fifth-grade teacher, and I spend seven hours a day, nine months a year with these young people, they are not ready for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kip. Ronna Fredericks. Ronna Fredericks.
Hello. My name is Ronna Fredericks. I am a grandmother and now a great-grandmother. And I'm, I am here today because I care about the health and the well-being of all Nebraska students, and that is precisely why I oppose the health standards. Nebraska's current health education framework guides districts in educating students and healthy decisions and lifestyles. The purpose of health, of health standards are not needed unless one considers them as a vehicle for furthering, furthering the politicized agenda. It should be deeply concerning to all Nebraska citizens that in order to teach the standards as written, there will be some sort of curriculum that will be taught and used to assess the comprehension of the student. When we consider how these standards would, would be taught and how students' comprehension might be assessed, we arrive at the graphic nature of the curriculum that would fulfill these standards, which brings me to the statement from the Commissioner on May 7th. The State Board of Education is not approving a sexual education curriculum, textbooks, or instructional material. It is intellectually dishonest for the board to pretend its actions don't have consequences. The adoption of these standards by the NDE and ultimately by school districts across the state will necessitate, necessitate the purchase of curricula and instructional materials that are, that are approved for the purpose of meeting the standards. Shockingly, the same group that developed the standards have also developed corresponding curricula and instructional material that implement the standards. So let's look at a couple of the standards, many are, that many are concerned about. For example, how do you assess a kindergartner in relation to HE K 72C? Define and consent and identify how to clearly say no.
Time. Thank you, Ronna. Dr. Tim Stratton. Welcome, Tim.
Those who stood by Martin Luther King were on the right side of history. Those who opposed his message were racists. Today, an ideology that is antithetically opposed to the message of Martin Luther King is creeping into Nebraska schools, and many, including some on this board, seem completely unaware of this evil at best or are complicit in it at worst. The popular term for this evil is critical race theory, CRT, but often masquerades as so-called social justice, equity, anti-racism, or systemic racism. CRT has its roots in Marxism from the scholars at the Frankfurt School in Germany close to a century ago. This is the same Marxist philosophy that led to the deaths of 100 million people over the course of a century, making Hitler's Holocaust pale in comparison. One particular board member here today has made it clear that these standards were not highly influenced by political leftists. Well, what do you mean by highly? Why would this board allow Marxists or those who opposed the message of Martin Luther King to influence what is taught in Nebraska schools even a little bit? Marxism and racism are evil, and allowing even a little bit of evil to influence the children of Nebraska is evil. This board member wrote that these standards were not developed by ideas of critical race theory. Well, what a strange coincidence that these standards use the exact same buzzwords which are included in the mantra of critical race theorists. Well, let's write this off as a crazy coincidence. If that's the case, this board should have no problem deleting the controversial language associated with CRT. Indeed, this board should have no problem incorporating language, making sure that Marxist ideas opposing the message of Martin Luther King will not be allowed in Nebraska schools. James Lindsay notes that according to CRT, Martin Luther King was both wrong and naive. White Americans can never judge blacks by the content of their character, they can only judge them by the color of their skin. You are either for Martin Luther King or against him. Don't be a Marxist, don't be a racist, don't be on the wrong side of history. Oppose critical race theory. Thank you.
Richard Turner. Richard Turner. Richard Turner.
Come to you as a retired school teacher. Subject is recognition of critical theory. The tenants of critical theory, including any anti-racialism and rejection of capitalism and individual freedom, have fully been embraced by a rapidly growing number of individuals in this country. Critical theory outright rejects logical empirical data and the science of oppressive and vulnerable and scientific concepts that are valid in living experiences. This is not only a radical departure from the goals of American education, it is actually an expression and a rejection of logic and reason of scientet. It is nothing less than an attack on the Western civilization. While critical theory has been influential in many of the areas of our society, its proponents rarely ever identify their belief by name. Instead, it terms social justice, equality, privilege are used to describe the applications. Many of these terms are indicated of a much different meaning than the one might first expect. For example, socialist justice is not concerned with justice to the terms of due process or other well-established homologues of the pursuit of truth. Rather, is the term meant to incorporate the vague ideas of redistribution of wealth and privilege, power, resources, from the haves to the have-nots, including, while necessary by force, simply equality is no longer being viewed as simply being fair and impartial.
Time. Thank you, Richard. Teresa Cook.
Good morning.
Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you. This board has expressed confusion about what CRT is and insisted that CRT played no part in the development of the proposed standards. Instead, the board has pointed to its very own equity lens as providing the framework. I want to draw the board's attention to the several aspects of that. First, the labels of CRT or critical theory are not nearly as important as the concepts upon which those worldviews are based. The equity lens this board relies upon incorporates the lingo and aims of CRT despite never mentioning it explicitly. Under the "consider" headline, the first step in looking through the equity lens is to consider all of the different categories into which people may be classified. Next, the user is, the user of this tool is to consider systematic, systemic barriers to success and historical inequalities. After consulting with various constituent groups, the ultimate goal is to promote equity through the various other considerations related largely to group outcomes. Like many aspects of critical theory, much of this sounds innate on the surface. A deeper look, however, evidences that this body's view of equity is pulled directly from the pages of a plethora of sources driven by overly CRT-related dogmas. On the NDE's website, educators are directed to numerous resources for anti-racism and equity for the purpose of promoting equality, equity, racial tolerance, empathy, and inclusion by addressing the historic and systemic marginalization and racist actions that have plagued underrepresented populations. This site goes on to list resources like the 1619 Project, which aims to reframe U.S. history as one of slavery and oppression.
Time. Thank you, Teresa. Nan Kino. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm from, Nan Kino from Creighton, Nebraska, and I've taught kids from preschool to junior high. And I'm sharing a response to Bloomstead's letter on critical theory. On June 3, 2020, in direct response to the death of George Floyd, Dr. Bloomstead issued a letter to Nebraska schools administrators in which he stated that, quote, "The role of education is a system for change and improvement," end quote. The letter is thick with references to concepts that are prominently featured in the CRT worldview, including the recognition of, quote, "Generations of racism, disenfranchisement, and marginalism," end quote, and the goal of creating space to genuinely and intentionally embed racially diverse perspectives into our conversations and actions. Why is there a need to embed? Race is every aspect. Why is there a need to embed race into every aspect of education? Is there a particular educational outcome that is served by this approach? Does two plus two ever equal anything but four, regardless of the race of the student providing the answer? Should the historical scientific fact be rejected for lack of racial sensitivity? Where does this approach end? Bloomstead continues that the conversation about racial inequities must occur everywhere to prepare our students for the future. What is the conversation? Is this something more than a cover for pushing the idea of systematic racism, which is a hot-button political issue? That is, that is sharply debated among academics and members of the public alike? Why does Bloomstead insist that we must promote active anti-racist teachings and leadership and commit to culturally relevant- and commit to culturally relevant standards?
Time. Thank you, Nan.
Thank you.
The next speakers are Kay Nelson, Patrick Martin, Nicole Norton, Nicholas Norton, John Low, Jennifer Thomas, Peggy Fong. She's not here? Are you Kay?
No.
Okay. Patrick Martin?
My name is Patrick Martin. I'm here as a taxpayer and parent to voice my opposition to all radical sex ed standards and any standards containing the terminology and buzzwords associated with critical race theory. On May 7, the propaganda sheet was written by the commissioner, available online and to those in attendance at the board meeting, stated, I quote, "Health education programs are designed to motivate students and maintain and improve their health, educate for self and others, prevent disease, form healthy relationships, and avoid or reduce health-related risk behaviors," end quote. Certainly, this sounds good, and I agree, some of the proposed health standards are fine and might lead to some positive outcomes. However, as written, the proposed draft also indoctrinates students for one side of controversial social and political issues. A public school should be a safe place from social engineering. Parents should not be worried that their tax-funded school is teaching values to their children that groom them towards one political worldview over another. In fact, according to the Nebraska Professional Practices Commission, which can admonish and reprimand teachers and even revoke their teaching certificates, states that teachers, I quote, "shall not use institutional privileges to promote political issues," end quote. This is found in Principle Three, Number Two of the Nebraska Professional Practices Commission Code of Ethics for Teachers. The proposed standards of H E three seven two C instructs the teachers to discuss the range of ways people express their gender and how gender role stereotypes may influence behavior. This standard, along with others, clearly seeks to promote one view of politicized issues, thus violating the previously noted Nebraska Teacher Code of Ethics. Schools and teachers should maintain instruction and academic excellence and abstain from values instruction that venture into controversial issues. Stick to kindness manners and civic duty and leave the rest of the prerogative to students' families. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Nicole Norton.
Hello. My name is Nicole Norton, and I am a concerned mom of three. When I heard about the proposed health standards, I thought they'd truly be about health. However, when I had time to read through these standards, I was shocked and horrified to see that social and political activism laced throughout. I read through the different grade levels and could not believe what this board had presented to the public as acceptable. I would like to read just a couple of them, the many standards of grave concern, and ask you pay attention to such buzzwords as bias, racism, stereotype, systemic racism, sexism, classism, et cetera. In eighth grade, discuss and describe the various isms, racism, sexism, ageism, heterosexism, ableism, classism, and their impact, individual and societal. Analyze how positive or negative stereotypes of an individual or group can be unconscious and may lead to discrimination and prejudice. In high school, evaluate and explain how some laws and policies are viewed as tools of systemic racism. In second grade, define and discuss examples of bias, stereotype, prejudice, stigma. In third grade, define prejudice and discrimination. Discuss stereotypes and racial bias in media and books, for example, heroes, bad guys, characteristics, roles. Those are just a few. The innocence of our kids is at stake. We need to protect that as long as possible instead of stripping it away. I had a conversation with my nine-year-old son the other day about some dear friends of ours who have a little African-American little girl they adopted, and then they had one of their own who's Caucasian. And in passing, I mentioned the adoption of this little African-American girl, and in amazement, he looked at me and said, "She's adopted?" That melted my heart. We teach our kids to love others, period. Instead of filling their minds with ideas of how to put people in groups and all the ways they could be different, we need to protect that innocence of our kids. Thank you.
Nicholas Norton. Welcome, Nicholas.
Thank you. You don't have a statement in front of you for me because I wasn't really sure what I was going to say until I got here. I think that everybody can agree, maybe we take a breath for just a second and agree that our schools should be a reasonably safe environment for our kids. Hopefully, we can all agree that we're trying to raise children to become adults that are taught a fundamental respect for everyone, regardless of their race, their color, their creed, or any of their beliefs, you know, that we raise our kids to be kind to others. Dr. Tim Stratton mentioned Martin Luther King, and that got me thinking a little more about Dr. Wyatt T. Walker, who was a chief advisor to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and a giant in the civil rights movement. And Dr. Walker warned specifically about ideologies that classify people into groups. And he specifically called out CRT, neo-Marxism, postmodernism. But I think the focus is that he expressed that there are too many quote-unquote remedies that are taking us in the wrong direction, emphasizing our differences instead of our similarities. I want to read a quote from Dr. Walker. I believe he has passed on now, but he wrote an article about six years ago in which he wrote, "The answer is to go deeper than race, deeper than wealth, deeper than ethnic identity, deeper than gender, to teach ourselves to comprehend each person not as a symbol of a group, but as a unique and special individual with the common context of shared humanity. To go to that fundamental place where we are all simply mortal creatures seeking to create order, beauty, family, and connection to the world that on its own seems to bend too often towards randomness and entropy." I think those are powerful words that we can all consider today. And I think I challenge this board and the writing committee, to the extent any of them are watching, that as we move forward in this process, let's focus on individuality. Let's focus on individual responsibility, individual achievement. Let's build a community where our kids can love each other, they can affirm and build each other up, they can respect each other without having to adopt particular political views. I think we can keep those things out of the classroom and still raise responsible children that become contributing members of a loving society as adults. That's the challenge that I think we all have, everyone in this room, as a parent, as a professional, as an educator, and members of this board. So thank you.
Time. Thank you. Jennifer Thomas. Jennifer, welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. I've seen it implied from the board that we don't understand what is and what's not in the proposed standards. I assure you, we do, and we don't want it for our kids or for anyone else's. Instead of making this a battle of semantics, let's all agree that the proposed standards contain what is widely known as comprehensive sex ed and critical race theory. The board's denial of that basic fact would be ignorance at best and an outright lie at worst. I'd be glad to email you hundreds of supporting documents if needed. There was not one individual allowed to give input into these areas who represented my views or the thousands of others you've heard from who are not okay with this. You had a goal, as evidenced by the objectionable CSE and CRT material already on the NDE website, and you chose people who would help you accomplish it. For example, the professor of all things LGBTQ, an activist, LGBTQ leader, and someone who spent 15 years at Planned Parenthood. I would submit that someone who promoted an organization that thrives on murdering our children did not deserve a seat at the table deciding how to educate them. You say that these are age-appropriate? Sure, if the goal is to indoctrinate our kids to a leftist, anti-American, anti-equality, racist view, sexualize our kids, and have them believe that their sexual choices have no spiritual implications. The push for this liberal, progressive ideology is what I call social terrorism, where we strive not for freedom of speech and religion, but you must adopt my beliefs or else. Our language has been hijacked, and we can only use words that have been approved by the leftists. It's now courageous for biological males to compete against females in sports. It's okay to separate and judge based on skin color and not character. Murdering children in the womb is called health care. Police are the enemy, and rioters, looters, and criminals are called heroes. We have to come before the Board of Education and beg you not to sexualize our children. I believe there has been a very clear attempt to silence our voices.
Time. Thank you, Jennifer.
And I ask, can you hear us now?
John Low.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for coming to Carney. I am State Senator John Low, and I represent District 37, which Carney is in the middle of. Thank you for choosing Carney. Thank you for facing the mothers, the grandmothers, and great-grandmothers, I hear, the fathers, the grandfathers, and I suppose the great-grandfathers, and looking in their eyes and listening to them, listening to their point. I've handed in my speech because I was not going to get through it anyway, so you all have a copy of my speech. And thank you to the senators that are listening online. There are at least five listening online at this time or viewing it through their internet. Thank you to Joni Albright, Senator from Northeast Nebraska, and Senator Dave Merman from Hastings and Carney County area for being here today to represent their constituents. These are the people of Nebraska. They're talking to you, they're asking you, please, do not do this. It's important to us, it's important to Nebraska. It's wrong. Simply wrong. Your job is tough as an elected official. I understand that, and thank you for stepping up and to perform a job. Now do what the citizens of Nebraska wish you to do. Thank you for being here, and I really appreciate this time.
Thank you, Senator. Peggy Fong. Peggy, welcome, Peggy.
Thank you, board, for being here today. Thank you, Senator Low. Rat poison contains 95% food and only 5% poison, yet that 5% is sufficient to eradicate a serious rat problem. Those of us who stand opposed to this draft do so because we believe that you are attempting to feed our children poisonous information. Concealed in the fine print of the sex education, social studies, and other areas of the draft, we find doctrines of Planned Parenthood, critical race theory, and the 1619 Project. We have identified the ideologies of Marxism, communism, and Owenism, which actively seek to destroy and further divide America. The devastating effect has already been seen in other states and nations. We have been forewarned to watch for these things. You must understand that to approve this draft without full transparency is not acceptable. In my opinion, this board has restricted our First Amendment right to free speech. By asking for written submissions or speeches in person, our words and thoughts are naturally limited. You offer no transparency, and we are not getting the answers we need from you. Frankly, it appears as if you have a predisposition toward the draft and against opposition. We require full disclosure from our elected officials. That won't happen unless we change the form. I strongly request that we hold town hall-type meetings in every district so that every concerned citizen can ask questions of you whereby you give us answers. Meetings like that would eliminate the appearance of you having a harmful agenda and would show that you are taking seriously your constituents' concerns. If you choose to ignore this request, you will confirm our suspicions that you are acting in bad faith toward our children. We have the right and responsibility to protect our children. It's given to us by God, and we will do everything in our power to do so.
Thank you, Peggy. The next group, Dorothy Renter, Jennifer Hewn, Alyssa Martin, Trent Delahant, Judy Karmazin, Keith Tillotson, Greg Brown, Senator Dave Merman. Please come forward. Dorothy Renter. Welcome, Dorothy.
Thank you. If you want to know what water is, why shouldn't you ask a fish? We often get so completely immersed in our own environment that we take things for granted and think they're normal. As state board members of Nebraska's entire educational system, there's probably nothing each of you know more about than education. Ms. Goobles, you were one of my instructors at Northeast Community College in the early 90s, nearly 30 years ago. How many years have all of you been in the trenches of education, teaching in the classroom, administrating, serving on local school boards, and other educational committees? I'm sure many, many years, and we thank you for that. We thank you for your service. And yet, I'm here today to declare that what is being proposed as normal in these educational standards is anything but normal. So perhaps, just for a moment, I can get you to be a fish out of water. All we're asking for in our health standards is abstinence-based approach, not abstinence as one of many choices of contraception. We also want a sexual risk avoidance approach that encourages and promotes sexual delay as the best and healthiest choice for all teens, all teens, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. Not one in which 10-year-olds are discussing sexual intercourse or 11-year-olds are learning how to evaluate when they're ready for sexual behavior, including oral and anal sex. Choosing and teaching the best in sexual health education also must include refusal skills. We want children to be taught how to stand firmly against sexual temptations and how to clearly refuse sexual advances. We don't want them to be taught ways in which they can participate. Have you even considered what a playground monitor is expected to do when these children start practicing what they've been learning in the classroom regarding their genitalia?
Time. Thank you, Dorothy. Jennifer Hewn. Jennifer Hewn. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Reverend Jennifer Hewn. I'm from Carney. Man, you guys have a tough job. Thank you for the work that you do with all sincerity. Thank you for the work that you do in serving the teachers and students of Nebraska schools. Thank you very much for your efforts to listen in a way with all diligence the arguments both in favor of and against these proposed changes to the Nebraska health education standards. When considering new changes and directions, it is my desire to have an open mind regarding the changes and to evaluate our options. So after reading the proposed health standards and researching curriculum which would meet them should they be adopted, I found a few things I was in agreement with. I find it very difficult to stand opposed to teaching children how to brush their teeth, how to protect their hearing, or even how to safely handle chemicals. Another element I did appreciate seeing included was in these proposed standards is the teaching of abstinence as a valid method of pregnancy prevention. However, after reading the proposed health standards and researching curriculum which would meet these standards, it is my opinion that the type and number of elements that I disagree with outweigh the elements I view favorably. Therefore, I am strongly against the proposed standards as they are currently stated. I have submitted a written statement and a list of 80 specific concerns for your consideration and revision. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Martin. Welcome, Alyssa.
Thank you. My name is Alyssa Martin, and I'm a lifelong Nebraskan, a taxpayer, and a former public school teacher, turned business owner, entrepreneur, educator, and parent. I believe that teachers are critically important in shaping the future of our society. Teachers are the individuals that spend the most time and have the most significant impact on the children in their charge, so we need great people to teach. Unfortunately, over the years, more and more responsibilities and expectations have been piled on our teachers. Now, they not only educate children, but they also provide emotional support and even ensure that basic needs such as food and safety are met. Add the challenges of the past year with teachers having to learn completely different methods of teaching on the fly to the mix, and you have a recipe for burned-out, exhausted teachers. It's no wonder that an astonishing 54% of teachers surveyed said that they are somewhat or very likely to leave the teaching profession in the next two years. Nebraska's already facing a teacher shortage, and I have the details on that in my written statement. Implementing the proposed Implementing the proposed health education standards or similar future drafts would only compound this problem, as many teachers find these standards reprehensible and diametrically opposed to their personal morals and values. In the past month, I've spoken with numerous friends, family members, and colleagues who are currently teachers, who have said that if these standards were implemented, they would find themselves at the moral crossroads of leaving the education system.
Time. Thank you, Alyssa. Trent? Welcome, Trent.
Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to introduce you to my eldest child, Maverick. He's four, and he'll be entering kindergarten next year in 2022. As his father, it is his mother's and I's responsibility to guide him in the ways we should go. We are to protect him and his innocence. I question bringing him here today due to the sensitive subject matter he would be exposed to. But it is the exact subject matter that is being proposed to be ingrained within our children. We are being told to teach this little boy right here about consent at five years old. I wouldn't even elaborate as he progresses each grade. We know what is proposed. Culture wants our children to be exposed. Trust me, they are. These subject matters are in the media, news, television, music, and politics. You name it, they're exposed, but not at school. That is a place we send our children to educate facts, not opinions, and to be protected while we are there. Let my wife and I guide him in this sensitive subject matter. And for those who say not all have this guidance at home, well, those parents are relying on culture to raise their children. And so, yes, they will still be exposed to the topics in that hand just fine, without the need of our education system meddling in as well. This is why we cannot stand by quietly and allow the CSE health standards to progress any further. It is based upon opinions and experiences, not facts. If it were to progress, you will find a number of families pulling their children from public school systems, a school systems that my peers and I have great and rewarding experiences within. Please listen to the majority of Nebraska residents, not the noisy minority. There are more avenues for them to push their agendas, just not in our public school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Trent. Judy?
Say thank you.
Welcome, Judy.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Judy Carmazin from Givin, Nebraska. I am speaking today as a mother and grandmother. I am retired senior litigation paralegal specialized in black mold. My pro bono work in LA and Orange County, California, involved preparing children, both boys and girls, to testify in court who had been molested and raped. It was difficult, especially for the young ones, to understand it was not normal or their fault. When California passed their Common Core bill, which contained this kind of sexual education for grades kindergarten through twelfth grades, it became more difficult because they were taught by their teachers graphic sex, sex parts, and acts in their classroom and given homework. God gave the children the knowledge to know right from wrong. Don't take that knowledge from God away from them by passing Draft One or Two. Children did and do not need to know explicit body parts or positions to know it is wrong in order to stop the abuse or testify in court. My father sexually abused my oldest sister. She was seven years old. I witnessed this at five. My innocence was destroyed at five. I still told my mother, "It was stopped." Don't take the innocence away from our children. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Dream of character above color, and you're making color above everything." Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Keith Tillotson? Welcome, Keith.
And I'm Keith Tillotson, a resident at Carney. I'm a former junior high science teacher, and my instruction included the teaching of the anatomy of the human reproductive system. I am opposed to the proposed health education standards and ask the Board to withdraw these proposed standards.
Thank you, Keith. Greg Brown? Welcome, Greg.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Greg Brown. I live in Carney. I'm the father of two adult sons who graduated from public school in Nebraska. I have a PhD in the biological basis of health and human performance. I'm a professor at the University of Nebraska at Carney. My comments are mine today. Do not represent an official statement at the university. I've provided all sorts of expert testimony, and you can see in my written document my professional qualifications, so I won't bore you with that anymore. But I want you to know that I am well-qualified as a scientist and as an educator. We've been told that these proposed health education guidelines are based on science. But where? Nowhere in these proposed health education guidelines does the term male, female, boy, girl, man, or woman appear. How can you teach science and health without teaching about the important health differences between men and women? We are also told that they're science-based, but yet the science on puberty blockers has not been subjected to rigorous evaluation. The limited existing research is subject to bias and can founding. And the use of puberty blockers to treat mental health issues is very low quality. Due to the possible permanent negative side effects of puberty blockers and the poor research on these drugs, the High Court in Great Britain has decreed that children under the age of sixteen cannot give reasonable consent to use these drugs. The Karolinska Institute in Sweden will not use these drugs except in clinical research trials on children under age sixteen. I seriously doubt whether this science was considered in the drafting of these standards. Therefore, I suggest that all of these standards be rejected and based in real science. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Senator Dave Merman? Senator Dave Merman? Welcome, Senator.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. I represent seven counties, mostly to the east, south, and west of Carney and Hastings, and glad to be here. I got many emails, and I think my constituents can voice my concerns better than I can, so I'll read those parts of some of those emails. "I would not be able to allow my children to attend public school any longer with a clear conscience if I knew they were learning these things at school." "The State Board of Education is denying the existence of comprehensive sex education and Critical Race Theory within the standards." Even NDE's own website has sources such as Portland, Oregon, and what they have done in their school system with the words institutional racism in the link shared. "The approved national standards for CSE are word for word with much of the Nebraska proposed standards." "I am not in opposition to those that choose to live a different lifestyle than my family does. I actually believe they should be loved and accepted as anyone, but that doesn't mean we should celebrate or love what they do. I am concerned at the hyper-sexualization of children and sex. Is this the school's place to be actually teaching of all things sex to our youth? I believe schools are wonderful places for our children to learn reading, phonics, spelling, writing, math, accurate history, science, et cetera. I do believe kindness and acceptance of others different from ourselves, and even topics like consent can be taught without sex being the focus. Even as adults, we do not need to know the details of what goes on in other adult sex lives. Why would we expect children to learn in-depth sexual material at a young age so they can accept others? I fear that making sexual activities normalized at school will lead children to be groomed by pedophiles to take advantage. Desensitizing children to sexual matters and offering sexual material is one of sex offenders' first steps in grooming a child. Normalizing all sex for all ages and especially teaching our youngest and most impressionable population of elementary schools too much too soon on these matters can lead to experimentation. Leave it up to the parents' discretion as to what their children learn regarding these matters so morality can be inserted into the conversations in ways that the family's structured belief system supports."
Time. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much.
The next group is Janice Van Winkle, Suzanne McDonald, Sue Rickley, Stephanie Norton, Teresa Carey, Kathy Adams, Kathy Larson, Jordan Martin, and Bernie Gutshirt. Janice Van Winkle. Welcome, Janice.
Thank you. My name is Janice Van Winkle. My husband and I are educators in Carney. We have six children, four of which were adopted through the foster care system. My parents also fostered for fourteen years. I've seen firsthand the effects on a child's life as a result of being neglected, abused, or sexually abused. One case I recall was an eight-year-old child who'd been sexually assaulted by her grandfather in place with our family. She continued to explore sexually with our family pets in the hall closet. Her life has been marked by terrible decisions and poor choices, all stemming from those early childhood traumatic events and awakening sexual urges too early. Those incidences with her grandfather derailed her whole life. Foster children are referred to as trauma children. They've been through a traumatic or series of traumatic events and has rewired their brains. It is a long, long road to recovery, if it's even achievable. These health standards are setting children and youth up to be traumatized by normalizing sexual activity. When I hear you talk about this health standard passing, all I see are a staggering amount of trauma children being added to a very taxed and broken foster care system. These standards would not protect our children but harm them. And unlike other children in the public school system, foster children do not have the option to opt out or homeschool. There is no Plan B for them. I firmly believe this is a battle between good and evil. I'd also like to add to the men and women who spoke so passionately at the last meeting for these standards to be passed. I disagree with your stance. As I listened, many of those spoke out of a place of pain from past events in their childhood. But pushing a sexualized agenda on our innocent children won't undo what they endured. This is not the answer you're looking for. I sincerely pray you find healing and wholeness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janice. Suzanne McDonald? Welcome, Suzanne.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking you for the opportunity to speak today regarding my objections to the proposed health standard revisions. My name is Suzanne McDonald, and my concern today is for my two sons, Boaz and Toby, both of whom have Down Syndrome and are nonverbal. I am unsure if you have looked at the ramifications of these new standards from my viewpoint. My boys are fully included with their typical peers, so they would be learning this information right alongside their classmates. With my boys both having cognitive delays, I have two major concerns. My first concern is for their safety. As it stands right now, due to their disability, they are already seven times more likely to be victims of sexual abuse. If these proposed standards are implemented, I believe the chances of this occurring would multiply exponentially. If children as young as the age of nine are learning about sexual feelings, what is to stop them from acting upon these feelings with a peer who cannot say no and is unable to tell anyone what happened? Then by the time they're in middle school, like my son Toby, they're learning about same-sex attraction while sharing bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers with my nonverbal, cognitively-delayed son. Again, unable to say no, unable to tell anyone what happened, and may not even have the level of understanding that what is happening to him is rape. This is my biggest fear. My second concern flips the scenario. Children with disabilities are visual learners. I'm assuming these proposed standards will contain many visuals. Seeing these pictures, given their cognitive delays and lack of discernment, could cause them to believe that it's okay for them to act out these sexual behaviors. As you can see, as a parent of children with disabilities, these proposed health standards are extremely concerning to me, and therefore I propose that all standards of Draft One that lead to explicit sex education must be eliminated in Draft Two of these standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Sue Rickley?
My name is Sue Rickley. I'm a mom, a grandma, a teacher, and a lifelong Nebraskan. I strongly oppose these health standards. They are not health. They are not a standard, not for positive growth. Today, however, evil is called good, and good is called evil. Truth is said to be lies, and lies are believed to be truth. Our Constitution was born out of great division and massive lengthy dissension by leaders who finally agreed to pray for God's direction. Then they came together and quickly produced what we still have today. For two hundred-plus years, people around the globe work and dream of coming here for opportunity and freedom, which we are about to lose completely, that is, without intervention. Our original documents identify rights given to us, the people, by God, rights that cannot be taken away or given to another. Government exists to protect those rights. But we're upside down. We need officials representing and serving constituents, not their own special interest groups. Our children are our treasure, our responsibility, and our future. Today, I publicly repent for the decades of decline of our moral fiber and conscience to the place of why we are here today. I have and will be praying for God to forgive our sin and heal our land.
Thank you, Sue. Stephanie Norton?
Welcome, Stephanie. Thank you. Thank you for being here, for being willing to listen. I am a mom and a grandmother and a retired educator. I look at faces as I look at you, and I see some of you are very uncomfortable with things that have been said today. You should be. We are too. As a former teacher, I remember how hard it is to get teachers to give up their time to develop standards, to help get this written. I understand that. As I talk to teachers, though, in the last few weeks, that's not so much what I'm hearing as I'm hearing a fear. Well, if we don't teach these standards, if these are passed and we don't teach them, I don't have a choice. I won't have a job. I need my job. I love my job. I love my kids. We don't need to put teachers in that dilemma. We've talked a lot about the explicit wording of the standards, and yeah, it's not appropriate. I taught middle grades. A lot of middle-grade students, fifth, sixth, they're not ready for this. And they certainly are not ready to hear it from their teacher, their coach, their whoever at the school. That's not appropriate. If they need to hear that, their parents decide when that should be, not the Board of Education. I am concerned for the public trust. As you can see, many people are concerned about this, and that reflects on you. And what are you doing to retain that trust? I'm concerned for my teacher friends who are still in the trenches. And I'm concerned for my grandchildren. I don't want them exposed to this. I have grandchildren in ages five to sixteen. Uh-uh. Not on my watch.
Time. Thank you. Stephanie? Teresa Carey? Teresa Carey? Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Just a few words I want to share. I have three beautiful, precious grandbabies. And I cannot sit back and do nothing if they are going to be indoctrinated by this racist ideology that's called Critical Race Theory, or if they're going to be taught the perversion of comprehensive sex education. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Adams? Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kathy Adams. I'm a wife, mother of four grown children, grandmother of nine grandchildren, which are six girls and three boys, and a great-grandma of a beautiful little girl. I'm retired, close to forty-five years of working in the medical field as a nurse and a phlebotomist, daycare provider, elder care, and education as a para and at YRTC, some at the same time. And I'm also a taxpayer and a voter. I come before you today as a concerned citizen and in opposition to all you are trying to promote in education, including tending toward CSE and CRT as a part of your goals. I question where your hearts are at in all of this. Is our children's welfare really your number-one priority? Or could it be something else entirely having nothing to do with children but entirely with your standing as one of the state boards of education? I hear your number three. After all, our culture is quickly changing from a faith-based one to a UBU nation without morals. The parts of culture are symbols, language, norms, values, artifacts. And indeed, all of those parts of culture are quickly changing due to the shutting out of the truth being taught as God would have it taught. Genesis 2:21, 24, "Remember, is the intention of our Creator." Verse 24 says, "For this reason a man will leave his father and mother and be united to his wife, and they will become one flesh." That's from the NIV. God's intention was not "You do you with however you see yourself as being in any way you want to be to you to find finding plager or by yourself at the time." way you want to be to you to find finding pleasure," or "by yourself at the time." In chapter three of Genesis, we see the fall of the first husband and wife because of pride, lust, and wanting pleasing to the eye. From there, it has been downhill ever since. Children quickly learn things, however, with a lot of thinking errors, and in my opinion, we need to be very careful with how adults teach them and which adults are teaching them. Here is where it comes to an experience of someone near and dear to my heart.
Time. Thank you Kathy. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Larson. I'm a retired teacher with undergraduate degrees in chemistry, biology, and elementary education. During most of my 33 years teaching, I taught human reproduction to my life science classes in seventh grade. All of us here have a vested interest in providing a superior and safe education for our Nebraska children. As a teacher, I always felt like I was a third parent, because if you're a good teacher, you love those kids and you care for them. And I wanted every adolescent in my classroom to know the facts about reproduction, so no one could mislead them because of ignorance. Personally, I refer to these standards as health and sex standards, because that's what they are. Some Nebraska citizens that sought to view the limited curriculum available for these standards were legally advised against saving them to their computers because they could face pornography charges. My question to you, board members, is who's going to teach my little, innocent, doe-eyed, dancing granddaughter? My doe-eyed granddaughter? In her first steps to this state-endorsed sexualization, no teacher who loves children is going to be able to do it. So who are you going to get to replace them? It will have to be someone who's comfortable in sexualizing children. Personally, I began thinking about how could I find the funds to fund a private education for my children? And grandchildren? As citizens, we've been told, participate, let your voices be heard. For many of us, it's the first time we have heeded that call. We Nebraskans are imploring you to please hear our cries.
Time. Thank you Kathy. Jordan Martin. Welcome Jordan.
Jordan Martin, correct?
Yes, welcome.
Hello, my name is Jordan Martin, Carney resident, certified teacher, educator, pursuing a master's in special education, wife, mother of five, four of whom are still at home. In the April board meeting, Board President Maureen Nichols opened the discussion of the health education standards and previously heard comment by sharing that the board received over 4,000 surveys responses, over 2,000 comments through the NDE website, and numerous personal emails to individual board members. I propose that the online form did not have any accountability. You cannot guarantee that the 4,000 responses were only from Nebraska residents. Also, in reference to curriculum and standards, noneducators would know what to expect a history text or math text to look like, so when those standards are listed, they don't question how the information will be presented to the students in a text or curriculum. I, as an educator, read the standards and began questioning what these criteria would look like in practice. For example, in kindergarten, students are most often taught whole group. Any worksheets or activities involve pictures. In fact, most lessons involve pictures, manipulatives of some kind. So what would teaching the proper names for sex organs look like in a kindergarten classroom? Would pictures or illustrations be involved? I agree to an extent that children need to know their own body with proper names. However, I question the appropriateness of whole-group teaching. This sensitive topic would be better suited for small group or individuals. Whole-group teaching of privates clashes with the entire concept of privates. The structure of the classroom may not be an appropriate means for reaching the underserved and at-risk. Thus, while my incoming kindergarten-aged child has known that she and all females have a vagina, I strongly disprove the notion that teaching the same-aged children the same thing whole group is developmentally appropriate. I think we have to be careful.
Time. Thank you Jordan. Bernie's shirt. Bernie, I'm sorry.
I apologize for scribbling my name. My name is Bernie Gacheski, and I'm a father of three and have nine grandchildren. First, let me make it clear that I do not hate anyone, and I believe that in general we all have the right to live our lives in accordance with our personal beliefs. However broadly speaking, I think the biggest problem with your proposed new standards is that they elevate unproven theories to scientific fact. While these new theories might make some people happy, they will alienate just as many, if not more, citizens of Nebraska while seriously infringing on parental rights. More specifically, I would like to address the Commissioner's Points of Clarification document, the second half of the statement which reads, "The proposed draft of the Nebraska Health Education Standards is not a mandate from the federal government and is not part of a worldwide plan to sexualize children. Does the Nebraska Department of Education presume to speak on behalf of every individual or organization from which they reviewed information or used source documents to create these standards? Does the Nebraska Department of Education really presume to speak with authority as to the plan of the authors and groups that funded them? For example, it is fairly simple to look at all worldwide organizations and how they are connected to the most controversial standards found in Draft One. The International Planned Parenthood Federation, a locally-owned, globally-connected civil society movement. Who does the IPPF partner with? The United Nations. Have any of you looked at their International Guidelines on Sexuality Education? They were published in 2009. And who is connected to the IPPF, Naturally Planned Parenthood? And according to an article from Planned Parenthood's History of Sex Education in the U.S., I quote, "Comprehensive sex education is increasingly recognized worldwide as a human right." And then there is CICUS, who published an article, the title says it all, "CICUS Stands with Planned Parenthood," which brings us right back to the proposed Nebraska standards in Draft One. The very standards of most concern are practically copied and pasted from the National Sex Education Standards. And CICUS is one of the answers.
Time. Thank you. Thank you Bernie. The next group, please come forward. Dale Greenwald, Natasha Johnson, Kimberly Maddox, Mark Schonbacher, Chad Gillespie, Karen Lind, Erin Peterson, Val Hyde. Please come forward. Dale Greenwald? Welcome Dale.
I'd say good morning, but it's afternoon, so good afternoon. My name is Dale Greenwald. I'm a retired educator of 35 years. Thirty-one of those years were here in Carney, one of the finest educational communities in the state of Nebraska. When people ask me why it is the best, I often responded by explaining the tremendous support which I've received from the Carney community. Our stakeholders, whether they be businesses, youth organizations, churches, but most importantly, parents, trust teachers to deliver meaningful, objective curriculum. It has been my experience over the years that 85% of parents attended parent-teacher conferences with me. When I was asked about what was being taught, why, and the direction the curriculum was headed, I was always able, without hesitation, to look them in the eye and tell them the answer. The reason for this was I believed in it as an educator. If I had been hesitant or unable to believe in a curriculum, it would have destroyed the trust that those parents placed in me and created an awkward, if not toxic, learning environment for the students. When subjective curriculum is introduced, it creates doubts from our stakeholders, which in turn diminishes community support for public schools. I oppose this health curriculum for the divisive nature that it would create in many, if not all, school systems in the state of Nebraska. It puts meaningful, objective education, the respect educators currently receive, and most importantly, student learning, at risk. Thank you.
Thank you Dale. Natasha Johnson. Welcome Natasha.
My name is Natasha Johnson. I am a third-grade teacher here in Carney, and I am a concerned parent. As a third-grade teacher, I am extremely uncomfortable teaching standards in this draft. Some, for example, describe the functions of basic reproductive body parts. Describe physical changes that occur during development, body, hair, body odor, body shape. Define sexual orientation, just to name a few. I can only imagine the questions that this might bring up that I can honestly guess most if any of my kids are not ready to hear. Not only does this make me uncomfortable when I think about the thought of having to teach these, I feel my rights as a parent are being violated. It is my choice as a parent to teach these things to my kids if and when I feel the time is right, and I can guarantee you how and when I teach them is going to look different. The fact that we are even asking teachers to do this is wrong, and it's going to put us in a position that is not our place to be in. The parent should be able to choose when and if these things are taught to their child. Thank you.
Thank you Natasha. Kimberly Maddox. Welcome Kimberly.
Thank you. My name is Kimberly Maddox, and I am a concerned parent. I have heard some of you ask what this would look like if it is put into effect, and I want to shed some light on that. So on the topic of comprehensive sex ed, Daniel Davis interviewed two parents from Rockland, California on the Daily Signal podcast in 2019. These parents met at a school board meeting and while at a school facilitated lesson on transgenderism in kindergarten. Refer to standard HE172D and see the path we are headed down. They talked about how the curriculum went from two or three videos to show the kids, which the parents would get to preview, to a 13-lesson curriculum, each given in 45-minute periods. That's almost 10 hours of information. There's no way for parents to know everything their kids are being taught. Here are some of the things that was found upon these mothers digging deeper into the materials that were given. The lessons were given in a three-inch binder of 13 lessons. The teachers also have access to slides that parents don't see when they go into the office to view the curriculum. In order to view the slides, you actually have to have a code, so most parents aren't seeing that material, and that's where they found some of the most objectionable things. Parents also don't understand that there's a list of resources that the kids are given, and if you follow those links, you go down a rabbit hole that leads to some pretty shocking things. There's a sex ed toolkit that's available to teachers to use and present to their students where they have whole pages on sex toys. They teach kids about the different materials of those sex toys and what they might be made of. They tell kids to be sure to clean them before passing it off to a partner moving from one hole to another. They also have a little box at the bottom with a picture that says, "If you don't have money to buy sex toys, cucumbers, carrots, and bananas make great dildos." It is obscene. There's a lot of interactive lessons, which is really concerning. There's one lessons for seventh grade where every kid in the class is given a card of their body, which either has an opening or body fluid. So some kids have a card that says vagina, anus, or mouth.
Time. Mark Schonbacher.
My name is Mark Schonbacher. I am a physician who practices in Nebraska, and I want to direct my comments towards gender education and dysphoria. Several recent initiatives from Europe looked at gender dysphoria. Both the Swedish Agency for Health Technology Assessment and a United Kingdom study noted a marked recent increase in adolescents presenting with complaints of gender dysphoria, for which they had no explanation. And I'm quoting them on that. They did not know why this was happening. Gender ambiguity is often a normal phenomenon in a developing child, and in the vast majority of cases, it spontaneously resolves with the child identifying with their chromosomes. Females XX, for those who don't know, males XY. If, however, we introduce doubt and confusion over gender identity through our media or educational systems, we can interrupt the normal spontaneous resolution and replace it with ongoing gender pathology. We are all, to some extent, susceptible to the power of suggestion, and children with their vivid imaginations and innocent nativity can easily fall prey to this. This likely explains a significant part of the recent increase in the incidence of gender dysphoria. We are unintentionally, or intentionally, I don't know, increasing the problem. Couple this with the evidence that shows little or no benefit from medical and surgical interventions for gender dysphoria, as reflected in the recent decisions by European countries to curtail medical treatment of gender dysphoria in children because of unfavorable risk-benefit ratios, and we have a situation where we are potentially creating a pathologic state for which we have no statistically-proven beneficial treatment. As educators, I would hope that you would strive to live by an old Latin saying that we physicians learned in medical school, and I wish more physicians would abide by, "Primam non necesser." First do no harm.
Thank you Mark. Maureen. Chad Gillespie. Maureen. 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 Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
So, I was listening, and I think I would... You emphasized... I'm so sorry, I'm going to get this right. And I don't want to misquote you. You said that children were presenting with an increase in dysphoria, however, they did not know why, and you emphasized the word "they." And what I couldn't understand is if you were saying that "they" being the children did not know why, or "they" being the people who they were presenting to did know why.
It was the researchers.
Okay, so the researchers did not...
Did not have an explanation as to why they saw this sudden increase in gender dysphoria.
And then when you said "we are seeing increases," were you referring to... Was it in Europe or America? Like, where were you saying that the increases were being seen?
This was in Europe.
Okay.
Okay, and this was at the same time that they found that the risk-benefit ratio treating children was not in favor of continuing treatment, and so they've curtailed those treatments. While we are proceeding ahead, they're actually backing off the puberty blockers, and that was alluded to by an earlier speaker.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chad? Welcome Chad.
Thank you. Hey, my name's Chad Gillespie. I'm from Carney, and I'm the father of five boys, and I'm here today to speak out for their future, as I stand in strong opposition to these health standards. Board member Stevens, he was gracious enough to give me a little time to speak with him after the last meeting, and I thank you for that. It was good to hear your perspectives and to have mine be heard talking back and forth with each other. Let me give you some takeaways from that discussion. First of all, I think it needs to be said again. I know, and hopefully everybody can understand, these health standards are a framework that curriculums can be built around, and I don't want people confusing those two things. Unfortunately, the curriculums that have been developed to meet these health standards are loaded with progressive liberal teachings, including comprehensive sexuality education and critical race theory. We had a couple other speakers bring this up too, that those curriculums are tied together with those two destructive ideas. Board member Stevens said that day that he wasn't sure why anyone would bring up critical race theory because it's never mentioned in these standards. But once again, these standards use language and phrases that just open the doors and invite in critical race theory and comprehensive sexuality education to be taught in our schools. And this twisted concept relies on social constructionism. It elevates storytelling over evidence and reason, and it really rejects the concepts of truth and merit. I don't think it has any place in our schools going forward. Mr. Stevens also pointed out that on this board's very own website, the 1619 Project is highlighted, and that has direct ties and correlations to critical race theory. I can tell you that if these standards are put into place, it'll make a difference for my kids and thousands of others across the state who will have their innocence robbed, their identities questioned, and their minds sexualized. Most of these concerns that have been brought forth by the people advocating for this could actually be addressed in schools through their existing standards, anti-bullying campaigns, and special initiatives designed to help make our kids be kind, respectful, and compassionate citizens.
Time. Thank you Chad. Karen Lind. Welcome Karen.
Thank you. My name is Karen Lind. I'm from Carney. I've been wondering what is really behind these sex standards. I know we are not fighting with flesh and blood, but against principalities and powers, rulers of darkness and spiritual wickedness in high places. During some research, I came across a figure of a false pagan demonic god dating back to the 1300s. This image is of a hermaphroditic figure with a head of a goat, woman's breast... This image is of a hermaphroditic figure with a head of a goat, woman's breast, and a rect male phallic symbol. Later, this figure was adopted as the official symbol of the Church of Satan. In 2015, the Church of Satan unveiled an eight and a half foot granite statue of this pagan god with the addition of two children. Why would you have two young innocent children gazing up at this horrific figure? This says everything and tells me exactly what and who is behind these standards that you are trying to push on our children. Satan comes only to steal, kill, and destroy, and these sex standards are meant to do just that. Kill, steal, and destroy our children's innocence and purity, and indoctrinate and seduce them into accepting the LGBTQ lifestyle and every other form of wickedness as normal. Indoctrinating children with sexual orientation and gender identity at these early ages only leads to confusion and permanent damage to their developing minds and bodies. A quote from a kindergarten book says, "I have a girl brain but a boy body." This is transgender. No child has these kinds of thoughts unless some adult puts them there. This is indoctrination. As individual board members pushing this agenda, you fall into one of three categories. You're naive, you're deceived, or you know exactly what's behind this and are a part of it. Children are innocent, and it's our obligation as parents, grand and great grandparents to protect them. As a lifelong citizen of the state of Nebraska, I say, we say no, not in our state.
Thank you. Erin Peterson? Welcome, Erin.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Erin Peterson. I'm the administrator at Faith Christian School here in Carney, Nebraska. I'm extremely proud to be a part of Faith Christian because I see every day the opportunity that we have to partner with parents to deal with difficult issues. And it's my call on this, this board and moving forward with this, that we follow that God-given mandate for parents to be the educators of their children. My primary concern I wanted to address today is the connection between these standards and curriculum that will be adopted. The purpose of content area standards is to set academic goals based on content. The opportunity for local districts to select curriculum is irrelevant since concerns are based on the content that is already predetermined by these standards. The description of human growth and development strand of the current draft includes the following rationale, quote, "Human growth and development programs are developmentally, that are developmentally, culturally, age-appropriate, medically accurate, and unbiased, have been proven to prevent or reduce risky behaviors." While I have a number of concerns about this statement and its relevance to these standards as proposed, I'd like to focus on the idea of bias. You've heard a number of controversial indicators that I won't repeat at the moment, but I wonder, and I am concerned, how any of these standards do anything but promote one biased political opinion. And I ask the question, doesn't this bias then in fact cause harm to student growth and development according to that previously listed rationale? Also listed on the NDE website, one of the purposes for standards is to create continuity across the state. With these standards being so divisive as you can see today, I question how these standards could potentially do anything but create, not be able to create continuity across the state, but further division.
Time.
Thank you so much for your time.
Val Hyde?
Hello, my name is Val Hyde. I was born, raised, and currently live in North Platte, Nebraska. I'm here to speak in support of age-appropriate, complete, and inclusive health education standards. Representation matters. From a very young age, I knew that I was very different from my peers. It didn't become a huge issue until elementary school, when gender roles started to be enforced. It wasn't until middle school that the pressure to conform to one gender was just too strong. I was sick of being teased and bullied. In high school, I had long locks, curly hair, and wore makeup. None of this ever felt right to me, but I didn't see any other option until college. I remember my first class that spoke on gender binary and how gender roles and norms can be completely arbitrary. I was finally beginning to feel validated for all the feelings that I felt when I felt like an outcast. Your mission states that education equity is defined by providing each student meaningful access to the educational resources they need at the right moment, at the right level, and with the right intensity. My college education was the first time I felt represented in an educational setting. Imagine if only that affirmative, inclusive, and validating education would have started in an elementary school. Imagine if my peers also had access to that, those educational resources so they could understand and support me. My peers didn't want to treat me differently. Students should not have to wait until college or move out of the state to have an affirming and inclusive education. Quite frankly, some kids don't make it that far because they decide that existing in a world that does not value who they are as human beings is just too great a burden to bear. I'm speaking today as a non-binary human, for all those kiddos that cannot speak for themselves because of representation matters. Your leadership is needed now more than ever. I urge you to please pass health education standards that create inclusive school environments because representation matters.
Thank you. Thank you, Val. The next group. Jenny Bonta? JD Bonta? Tom Martin? I'm just taking those for now. Jenny? Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you. My name is Jenny Bonta. Professionally, I'm an advocate for victims of sexual and domestic violence. I could hear from my allotted time and try to explain to you the importance of approving comprehensive state health standards and how much those changes would impact preventing sexual assault, dating violence, and trafficking for youth in our state. I could elaborate on how those proposed health standards could shift and improve sexual, social, and emotional health and academic outcomes for our youth and in turn, our communities and state. But today, I come to you as a mom. My two children are enrolled in North Platte Public Schools. Neither of my children fit the mold of what our society says is normal, and the current Nebraska public school environment has not always been easy or affirming for either of my children. My son was recently diagnosed with autism. He loves with his whole heart and thinks kindness will change the world. He loves Disney princesses and all things that sparkle. I have to constantly reaffirm him for his likes, his identity, and his joy. My daughter has been ridiculed with homophobic slurs and asked daily to affirm her gender by peers and teachers since seventh grade. She has had to face discrimination from teachers and fellow students because of her gender identity and sexual orientation. While her strength is usually unwavering, I know there are only so many times I, as a mom, can say, "You are loved, you are perfect, and you deserve to live your truth." Currently, both of my children spend a good part of their day in an environment that can quickly dismantle and abraise any self-value they have developed. The burden of creating an affirming environment falls on the children and others who are forgotten and unmentioned in current teachings. They have to advocate for themselves daily for others to understand their value. The mere fact that I'm before you all today asking to please not exclude my children from the educational standards and for your help in creating affirming, positive, safe places for them and others.
Time. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jaylee Bonta. I am a senior at North Platte High School. Currently, the sex education offered is different throughout the country, and some places don't even have much of anything. These gaps are leaving young Americans uninformed about basic anatomy, healthy relationship skills, and safer sex practices. On top of this, anatomy, or whoops, on top of this LGBTQ plus youth face their own challenges. Sex education materials often assume students are heterosexual or cisgendered. This not only prevents LGBTQ plus students from learning the information and skills they need to stay healthy, it also contributes to the climate of exclusion in schools, where LGBTQ plus students are already frequent targets of bullying and discrimination. As an LGBTQ plus student, I have firsthand experience of this discrimination. I've been misgendered, called homophobic slurs, and even asked if I'm a boy or a girl. It's tough in this world, especially if you don't fit the norm. Without proper sex education, my peers and I are learning what we should learn from school, from TV, movies, social media, and even having to look stuff up on the internet. And we all know where that can lead. With an all-inclusive sex education program, students will get the correct information they need to succeed in healthy life, and it would help LGBTQ plus students feel more welcome in the school environment. Along with it, we will help prevent dating violence, help us develop healthy relationships, reduce teen pregnancy, and STIs and STDs. It's up to the teachers, parents, and administration, and you to ensure that the change in health standards and make sure youth get the education we deserve and help us make better choices. I know many parents and teachers may not be happy with these changes, but it is very much needed for all of us students. Thank you.
Thank you, JD.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Tom Martin. I'm a professor of philosophy in my 35th year at the University of Nebraska at Carney. What we have before us is not, is a curriculum that is not a health curriculum. It is a current sexual ideology. It is Marxist in its very basis. It denies any reality of inherent human nature, and by that I mean, man is made in the image of God, male and female he is made. It quickly focuses upon gender identity, a social construct created by social scientists. One did some research in 1960. Robert Stroller, an American psychiatrist and psychoanalyst, borrowed the term gender from John Money, a psychologist and sexologist from New Zealand, who introduced the term gender identity and gender role into theories regarding the influence of social constructs on gender. The theory of gender identity, when taught as health knowledge, can easily be summarized on Teens Talk, a website for children. Gender isn't about somebody's anatomy, it's about who they know themselves to be. There are different gender identities, including male, female, transgender, gender neutral, gender binary, agender, pangender. All or none of these, a combination of none. We are treating our children as though they are a PlayStation, and they're going to use their sexual orientation and emotional feelings for what we feels good is their identity. They will be made in their own image, and that is what we're putting forth. In order to have health standards, it is necessary to follow the science in the proposed health education program. The physical reality is that every cell in the human body holds either XY or XX pair of sex chromosomes, the genetic markers for males and females. Human sexual is binary. To ensure the reproduction of our species, there is no third sex, and procreation involves the production of living souls made in the image of God, and this has all been pushed aside, and this is Marxism, a complete takeover from the top down on how we are supposed to form our children.
Time. Welcome, Kathy. Welcome, Kathy.
When's the timer start? Okay. I'm here today to specifically rebut some of the statements made in the points of clarification issued on May 7, 2021. The first is that the draft was not written by activists, and the list of educators participating has been made available. Through my research, the list of educators was not made public until after the draft was written and published, even though it was requested prior to that. I know this through personal experience as well as from those individuals in the legislature and other departments whom I have contacted. You also failed to represent that the educators who wrote the first draft had to undergo equity training prior to the draft. Much of that presentation was credited to the Great Lakes Equity Center. While much of that training had solid components, a little dive into the Great Lakes website provides resources that offer a very unique ideology, including teaching LGBTQ-themed literature in English language classrooms, followed by their Rainbow Book List. Ally Week Educator Guide, Affirming Gender in Elementary School, many of these were provided in cooperation with Glessen. All these resources seek to alter the truth about the human person. Secondly, you quite carefully crafted the statement to not include the advisement you received by experts, activists, like Liam Hurtin Rodriguez, Abby Swatsworth of Outnebraskia, Lisa Schultz of the Women's Fund of Omaha, a board member of Friends for Planned Parenthood, and an ASEC member. Just who were the advisors that have basic common sense on the flat-out dignity of simply belonging to the human race and who know that parents are the first and most important educators of their children on their self-worth and their sexual education when appropriate, and guided by human nature and right reason, who scientifically know that boys and girls are genetically made as such? I have personally called some of the members on the advisory team to ask what input they gave. To my surprise, some of them gave none. Perhaps the list should include only those who did give out input. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Amy Lowe? Stephen Frisell? Beth Vivalaka? Tim Peterson? Welcome, Amy.
Thank you. I am a mother of seven, an educator, and a disappointed Nebraskan. I am refuting the points of clarification from May 7, 2021. Specifically, Planned Parenthood and Black Lives Matter are not funding or helping to write the standards. Those groups may not be directly putting pen to paper, but they most definitely have influenced the draft. The NDE and the Women's Fund of Omaha are listed as WISE legacy partners. A direct quote from the NDE's website states, "WISE funds supported continuation of a long history of providing technical assistance, training, and resources to school districts statewide who seek assistance in implementing sexual health education initiatives." WISE also funds, is funded by the Grove Foundation, which helps to fund Planned Parenthood. Two of the Grove Foundation's focuses include sex-based education and reproductive justice. They partner with organizations to increase districts' capacity to deliver sex education, and they, the funding, they fund work that recognizes the root causes of reproductive inequalities and seeks social change, particularly organizations led by women of color and/or queer and trans people of color. The guiding document for the human growth and development portions of the health standards is the National Sex Education Standards Edition 2, which includes two contributors who are directly affiliated with Planned Parenthood, Sonya Norsworthy and Elise Herman. More than half of the other contributors have ties to gender issues. That document, published by FOS, is endorsed by Gender Spectrum, GLSEN, Race Forward, Racial Equality Tools, PFLAG, and others. Wordings on many of the standards are directly cut and pasted from the guiding document into the draft. Black Lives Matter and Planned Parenthood may not have put money directly in your bank account, but they most certainly have influenced the outcome of the draft. This point of clarification is false, and this only makes me wonder if there is even more involvement than is at first apparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Stephen? Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Frisell. I'm here to refute the points of clarification from May 7, 2021. I address that the proposed draft is not a mandate from the federal government, government, and it is not part of a worldwide plan to sexualize children. I would like to believe that statement could be reassuring. However, it is not. If it is not a mandate, then why are we even here addressing sex education? Why have this process at all? It was mentioned earlier that the draft was largely influenced by an input from WISE. Are you aware that only two state departments of education are included in their legacy partnerships? Only Nebraska and Oregon? Is that the company we wish to keep? The acronym WISE says so much, working to institutionalize sex education. That certainly sounds like a broad sweep to me. In addition, the National Sex Education Standards Edition 2 from the FOS group is a collaboration of Advocates for Youth Answer and CECS. The mission of CECS is to promote the institutionalization of comprehensive sexuality education in public schools. Simply by going to their website, you will see the following, Advancing Sex Ed for Social Change Since 1964. Within the clicks of the website, you will see that CECS is also deeply devoted to developing legislation on both the federal and state level. Don't get me started on the Board of Directors for CECS. I'm offering you a list of many. I'm offering you a list of many of the Board and their bios. And, but give up when I saw the board member from Black and Pink of Omaha posting information on International Sex Workers Day, "No bad whores, just bad laws." Finally, from CICUS, I quote, "CICUS works to create a world that ensures social justice and reproductive rights." Tell me how you can honestly state this draft is not part of a larger nationwide, and yes, a worldwide plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth.
Welcome, Beth. Thank you. I am a parent of 11, a grandmother of 27, and an educator. I am here to further rebut one of the Points of Clarification issued on May 7, 2021. I will address the point stating, quote, "The State Board of Education is not approving a sexual education curriculum, textbooks, or instructional materials." This includes the book, It's Perfectly Normal. This book is not being approved nor considered as a valid resource by the State Board of Education or the Nebraska Department of Education," unquote. I am pleased to learn that It's Perfectly Normal will not be gathering an endorsement from you. Of course, since your goal is to have local boards decide on how to implement the standards, this might seem to get you off the hook. If the groups that assisted in writing the National Sex Education Standards, which are readily verbatim in the NDE draft, are providing curriculum and instructional manuals, we are going down a very nasty pornographic-filled path for our children. The only curriculum and materials that could be plugged into the draft standards are inappropriate. Groups like ANSWER, CICUS, and Advocates for Youth all call their work sex education, and all provided input into the national standards. One of the collaborators, ANSWER, has the mission to provide, quote, "to provide and promote unfettered access to comprehensive sexuality education, CSE, for young people and the adults who teach them." The group ANSWER, quote, "began using the power of peer-to-peer communication in the publication of its award-winning teen-written Sex Etc. magazine and website, which allows teens to directly access accurate and developmentally appropriate sexuality information," unquote. Let me tell you, the content, real-life videos, as well as cartoons, are not PG-rated. One of ANSWER's core initiatives is to, quote, "grow and evolve its signature teen-written publication, Sex Etc., to ensure its continued relevance and viability by incorporating video content and developing an innovative new curriculum that centers the teens' staff writing."
Time. Thank you, Beth.
That's teenagers' writing curriculum.
Tim Peterson. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Tim Peterson. I'm a licensed mental health practitioner and a pastor. My son, when he was 18, was stranded coming home from college. He needed a hotel room. Because he was not 21, he could not sign for a room because the world of commerce learned from education teaching that a young people's brains are not fully developed until sometime in their 20s. They have the capacity to make decisions such as contracts and decisions impacting their future. The NDE is willing to violate these accepted standards of neurological development in promoting K-6 graders to make lifelong, life-altering decisions regarding sexual orientation and preferences. I've been a mental health provider since 1993. I have worked with hundreds of sexually traumatized children. A report of child abuse is made every 10 seconds. According to the Department of Justice, one in three girls and one in seven boys will be sexually assaulted by the time they reach 18. The teaching of sexual explicit material proposed by the NDE will re-traumatize many of these children with sexual abuse history. There has been nothing spoken of from the NDE regarding the negative effect of this type of explicit teaching to children who have been abused, and nothing spoken of how they suggest schools are to address the damage caused by explicit sexual education. I'm asking you, as a board, to commit to the integrity, to own and be accountable to the basic neurological development of children, and to honor and protect the abused and wounded children that attend our schools every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next group. Alyssa Cruffield. Jonathan Hastings. Ryan Brunna. Jason Martinez. Marge Kirchner. Gerald Kirchner. Kelly Brady. And Amanda Rustine. Oh, I'm sorry. Alyssa. Welcome, Alyssa.
Hi. My name is Alyssa Cruffield. I'm a parent, a board member of a local private school here of Faith Christian School, and a college educator. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And I don't have a whole lot of extra to add to the argument or anything. I'm strongly opposed to these health standards. I just want to say also, for those of that have come to speak in opposition, I know I respect your voice. I, I, it hurts me that your children have been bullied, and that is not right. And I do hope that we can continue to address those types of issues of treating everyone with respect and not bullying anybody, right? And so, we are doing those kinds of campaigns, and I appreciate that. I do want to say, you know, that even though life is confusing, you know, and we're, you know, talking about these issues, that they should be addressed at home. My cousin, her daughter is what you would say, a tomboy. And, you know, she, just living in the culture that we're living in, she's confused. And she said, you know, "I like boy things. Does that mean I'm a boy? You know, I should be a boy?" You know, and these things are private, and they should be addressed at home. And also, so I don't have much else to say, but I do have to say, for those of you here, if you are looking for an alternative to these health standards, we do have an excellent education at Faith Christian School, and we do have financial grants based on financial need. So that is an alternative option to this, to these health standards. And if you're interested, go to www.fcs.carny, or fcscarney.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alyssa. Jonathan Hastings. Jonathan Hastings.
Obviously, I'm not Jonathan, but he had to leave, so I'm filling in for him. I'm Barbara Rosenthal. I'm a nurse. I'm a mother of two, grandmother of four, and concerned. The purpose of the lower education is to teach kids how to be functioning adults by math, reading, science, and grammar. Schools should be able to teach only the students about objective truths, not subjective. I have recently been to a, quite a few meetings about discipleship, biblical citizenship, and it's been very enlightening of what our founding fathers have put forth. And it's not exactly what we are doing as a country today. Our founding fathers, you may be familiar with this, were very clear that our country will not survive under the moral country, unless it's a moral country, to survive. Because without being moral, you don't, you don't, these laws don't mean anything. And in Exodus, there are four things that we're supposed to elect our officials. God-fearing, honest, able-bodied, not taken to bribes or covetousness. And we have to be sure and include those four things. God-fearing, honest of truth, able-bodied, and not taken to bribes. Just look at our leaders. Is that what it is? I don't know about this particular group of bodies that we're in front of, but our legislation, our Congress, are they fitting those four from Exodus? And it's Exodus 18, 19 to 21, if you want to look it up. But anyway, I think we need to start from the beginning, and that way, it would help us get on the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ryan Brunna. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Board. Good morning. My name is Ryan Brunna, and I am a soon-to-be father. In preparation and standing before you today, I have tried to do reflection and consideration for both sides of this issue regarding these proposals, particularly the standards teaching gender fluidity and all the proposed gender identities. And my heart began to break. I began to see the deep pain and hurt in the eyes of individuals that feel trapped inside their own body, or the boy who has been ruthlessly made fun of because of his homosexual attraction. And that is a living hell. I can now see why many individuals would like to see these standards passed. They don't want to feel the pain anymore that they have felt for so long. And while there isn't an easy answer, I don't believe the particular standards teaching gender fluidity, sexual orientation, and all the different gender identities is the answer. When I was a young boy, I was exposed to pornography at a very early age, and because of that, out of sexual curiosity, I had a sexual encounter with another boy. And had I been taught these different concepts when I was in elementary, I think it could have really set me on a different trajectory that I think would have really been harmful for me, and I'm a happy heterosexual married man with a soon-to-be child on the way. There was a study done in Sweden, conducted over 30 years, and Sweden is very supportive of the transgendered. And the study concluded with this, and I handed you that study. This study found substantially higher rates of overall mortality, death from cardiovascular disease, suicide, and suicide attempts, and psychiatric hospitalizations in sex-reassigned transsexual individuals compared to a healthy control population. This highlights that post-surgical transsexuals are a risk group that needs long-term psychiatric and somatic follow-up. The answer is real, true, loving biblical love. 1 Corinthians 13:4-5 says this, "Love is patient; love is kind; it does not envy; it does not boast; it is not proud; and it does not dishonor others." And we must not dishonor those that think or believe differently than us.
Thank you, Ryan. Jason. Jason Martinez. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you. Good afternoon, hungry Board. So, at the last meeting, I heard multiple points of clarification. As a group, you challenge that CSE and CRT are not in the standards. Mr. Stevens even wished that this letter was on everybody's seat. We ought to have something in every daily and weekly paper that clarified some of this. While I have seen nothing in the last month other than a copied and pasted email, I see your leadership as inept and derelict. At the last meeting, opponents were often asked for Points of Clarification in a dismissive manner to validate their statements. In contrast, proponents were often coddled by Ms. Neary. I hope that you're seeing us. Ms. Co. James ranted to basically tell the public that we were misinformed because we may have received information from church or other organizations, as if the people cannot do our own research and draw conclusions from sources outside the NDE or approved organizations such as CICUS. Perhaps, rather than pondering if the public should, as you said, get their information by flying a plane from across the sky, you should ask if the school boards are supposed to drop their curriculum from thin air. Point of clarification. If anybody in this room thinks that you're at the Holiday Inn, you're all lost and confused. Because you know what? We're actually at Interstate Subdivision KY Lot E, Parcel 602907000. The public will not be fooled. Board members and commissioner, although you can continue to try and hide the elephant in the room, this is CRT, and we are at the Holiday Inn. Lastly, Ms. Morrison, in an interest of transparency, transparency, to have to feel like we were included, this would be a very wise approach going forward. The executives in this room, us, the voters, the people, demand that you hear our message.
Time.
We are your boss.
Time. Jason, thank you. Marge Kirchner. Welcome, Marge.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Marge Kirchner. I'm from Mindon. First, I want to thank Governor Ricketts for bringing the proposed Comprehensive Sexuality Education Curriculum to our attention. It has opened the door to the workings of this board and the plans its members have for the future of our schools. I stand opposed now to all drafts of this proposed curriculum. The members, the members of this board are elected officials who appear to be no longer interested in serving the majority of their constituents. The goals and policies that the commissioner, the board members, and their associates are promoting are not in alignment with the moral values of this state, and in fact, are in direct opposition. And what most disturbs me is that you folks seem to be making these policies with impunity. Previously, we have looked to this board for leadership. With the proposal of the CSE curriculum and the inclusion of critical theory ideology stated in your goals and policies, we have witnessed a break in the pattern of your decision-making. We no longer find your decisions trustworthy, and I would add that as you work on more curriculum in a broader spectrum, we are going to be watching, and we are going to be here. I encourage each one of you to reflect on both the spoken and the written comments from your constituents. I encourage you to begin making decisions consistent with the conservative culture of this state in order to achieve continued educational success. I thank you.
Thank you, Marge. Gerald. Welcome, Gerald.
Thank you. I oppose this draft version of your proposed health standards. You may remember, last month, I did a brief flyover of critical theory. It exists to divide us as either oppressors or oppressed. It entered America and your minds through our university system. I remember the principles being pushed on me as a student in education classes in the '70s. You may not all be conversant with critical theory, but as a professional educator, you have been stealthily indoctrinated with its nefarious precepts. The very appearance of the word equity in your standards betrays that foundation. This board is proposing content standards that are far from the values of the majority of Nebraskans. Critical theory actually predates Marx and Engels. It is spawned by the spirit of the angel of life, another name for Satan. Satan has been working this plan in America since before its inception, 1619. Remember what happened in 1620. He is beautiful, brilliant, and patient. There are only two teams. You could be on his team, or you can be on God's team. This board is a constitutional board. According to the Constitution, you are impotent without the UNICAM because your duties and powers are prescribed by the legislature. Therefore, my prayer today is that the governor of our great state will call the UNICAM into an emergency session for the purpose of suspending this board's duties and powers until the state legal authorities can conduct an in-depth investigation on how and why this board has undertaken to implement standards which have twice been rejected by the UNICAM, and therefore, the people of this great state. This I ask in the almighty name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Kelly Brady. Kelly Brady. Welcome, Kelly.
This is Amanda. Did you say Amanda?
Kelly. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you. Kelly. Professional. Parent. Grandparent. I don't have a degree, but I am smart. I found a coincidence. Why is this being proposed now? I can tell you. Biden has earmarked billion of taxpayer dollars for schools that adopt CSE and CRT. Why? Can any of you answer why? Why do you want this in our schools? It's not good for our kids. It's not science. It's absence of science. Science is not fluidity. Gender is not fluidity. Math is not fluid. We have right answers, and we have wrong answers. There is a letter here from... There is a letter here from the Indiana Attorney General. The proposed priorities are thinly veiled attempt to bring our state classrooms to the deeply flawed and controversial teach of critical race theory in 1619. I find it very disrupting that I saw you, Commissioner, promoting it and saying we should teach this to our children. It's been repunked. It's been refuted. It's not fact, it's storytelling. Do we want to teach our children truth? Or ideals? I know what I want. I want the best for our kids. We deserve it. They deserve it. Do better. Make Nebraska important for our kids to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Welcome, Amanda.
Thank you. I am Amanda Ristine from Gothenburg, Nebraska. My husband and I are raising our two boys east of Gothenburg on our family farm. I published a letter to the editor in our local newspapers rebuting District 7 Representative's letter stating his observations from the May 7th State Board meeting. Myself and others would like to share that letter with you today. I am writing in regards to the State Board of Education publicly stating that CSE is not in the proposed health standards. First, CECCAS invented CSE. On CECCAS website, you will find their tagline is Sex Ed for Social Change in a publication called National Sex Education Standards Core Content. National Sex Education Standards were one of the national resources used to create Draft One of the proposed health standards. If you don't believe it, you can find it on NDE website. How do we know the proposed Nebraska health standards contain CSE? I'll give you a couple examples, and if you need more, let me know. National Sex Education Standard. Define gender, gender identity, and gender role stereotypes. Proposed Nebraska Health Standard. Define gender, gender identity, and gender role stereotypes. National Sex Education Standard. Differentiate between sexual orientation and gender identity. Proposed Nebraska Health Standard. Differentiate between sexual orientation and gender identity. Word for word, Nebraska's standards mimic the National Sex Education Standards, which by definition is CSE. Take the time and do the research before falsely educating our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amanda. The last three, the last three speakers. Carmen Keith? Diane Kinnon? And Rebecca Gronwald?
Thank you. I'm Carmen Keith from Gothenburg, Nebraska. I'm going to continue to read the letter that was published in response to District 7 Representative's observations from the May 7th State Board meeting. I've been asked by several individuals, why do you want all the state standards scrapped? There is quote "good stuff" unquote in the standards. First, I agree there's good information included in the health standards. I believe most of the good stuff is already being taught in our school system. We have a school system that takes the time to see what our students need, and it's usually steps ahead of other districts. Gothenburg Public Schools recently had strategic planning committees with one focusing on social slash emotional well-being. We don't need the state or government telling us what to teach. Secondly, activists for CSE have twice tried to pass bills in the UNICAM rule. In 2011, LB 192, introduced by Senator Brenda Council, sought to require CSE in Nebraska. In the press release was the quote, "Planned Parenthood of the Heartland Official Support, LB 192," end quote. In 2013, LB 619, introduced by Senator Ken Har, also sought to require CSE in Nebraska. Senator Har's wife was the director of the regional Planned Parenthood Organization at the time. Both of these efforts were unsuccessful. Therefore, I'm saying scrap the standards. Our Nebraska State Board Education acted like sneaky snakes and are trying to implement these standards behind the scene. We've all seen it happen right before our eyes. They create standards and slowly add to them behind parents' backs. The damage is done before parents realize what is going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carmen. Welcome, Diane.
Thank you very much. First of all, I would like to say that I'm greatly saddened that I am standing here today. I'm sorry that society has degenerated to an all-time low. And I do, I am very sorry for people who are struggling with their identity. But I have to agree with what has been said before. God has made us male and female. I don't think he has tried to trick us in any way. If you're checked, you're either an XX or an XY. There's nothing else out there. And so, like I said, I am sorry for anybody that is struggling. I do feel like by implementing this, that we are going to create a lot of confusion. I have spent over 50-plus years as a licensed medical professional. Part of that time has been in school nursing. I have seen things come and go. I have seen problems with introducing things to children who are not ready for them. I do, I think that lumping people and children together as all being developmentally ready is wrong. I also would like to end Amanda's letter, and I quote from her letter. "We have been told that these standards were written by Nebraska educators such as teachers, school nurses, administrators, ESU leaders, that definitely give us the warm, fuzzy feeling. On the Nebraska Department of Education website, they have provided subject matter experts. I have again done my research and find several things interesting. Two of the experts have CSE as part of their credentials. Yes, that means comprehensive sexuality education experts. Well, they didn't hide this per se. It just wasn't brought to our attention. And they continue to say CSE is not part of the health standards. All of the experts they have listed have roles that they play. Examples, several of them work for Nebraska DHHS, UNL, NDE, and physicians, et cetera. So I would like to say that there will be a time, and I am sure, that every knee will bow. And we need to consider what we are teaching our children and maybe their, our influence on them. Please read Matthew 18."
Time. Thank you. Rebecca? Welcome, Rebecca.
My name is Rebecca Gronwald, mom of four and gymnastics coach. Remote learning in spring 2020 opened my eyes to how complacent I had become in the education of my children. We chose to homeschool this year while working to take a more active role in the education offered to our kids. As we've researched and followed this health standards issue, I have several concerns, many of which have been voiced already today. On May 7th, 2021, as concerned citizens gathered in this room to express their thoughts surrounding the proposed health education standards, this body had already begun a counterintelligence mission in the form of a two-page statement entitled, "Points of Clarification: Nebraska Health Education Standards, Draft One." The issuance of that document and the timing of its creation are highly irregular and very concerning in a free and democratic nation. The ability of the public to comment upon matters of public concern addressed by this body is enshrined in both statute and administrative regulation. This is an important step of the process that is meant to ensure the board examines all angles of an issue before establishing policy related to the same. It is even more vital for this board to give due attention to concerns of stakeholders when considering any changes resulting in radical changes in philosophy. These proposed health standards, in particular, certainly fit the bill as a philosophical shift, a fact which cannot be denied by anyone in this room. Issues of sexuality and the proper role of sex education are often controversial and predictably lead to conflict on both interpersonal and political basis, which we have seen today. In the current sociopolitical climate, those standing in opposition to any idea, particularly with regard to sexuality, are regularly shamed, bullied, and canceled by their non, for their nonconformance. Even in face of likely backlash in this tense environment, dozens of individuals have reached out to this board with similar concerns related to the genesis and content of these proposed standards. Unfortunately, it felt as if instead of listening to what was being said, the board was engaging in a smear campaign to discredit the opposition. As a mom that is striving to return her kids to public school, to their friends, to their teachers that love them well, it is discouraging for me as a mom to feel that I may come to that position where I have to tell my baby girls that they are going to stay home with their mom that loves them so much because I have lost the faith that I have in their educators to look out for what is best for them. Thank you for your time.
That concludes public comment. Agenda item 2.3, written public comment. We have written public comments submitted from several members of the public. The written public comments are linked in two documents in the Spark Data Systems. These written comments have been made available to the board members prior to this meeting. Agenda item 2.4, the board will now take a break for lunch. The Board of Education is back to finish the rest of our business meeting today. We are on Agenda Item 3, the Commissioner's Report. Commissioner, you have 3.1 through 3.4.
Yeah, and thank you. So first item is just our consent agenda process tonight. I don't believe we have any items that have been requested to be removed from consent agenda, so we'll proceed with that. I have the report on rules. So within, within your, your materials is the report on rules. I'll just quickly go through it. We have a hearing draft approved for Rule 24. And in, in fact, they, well, I might be, I think we got hearings scheduled for also, potentially depending on your action today, on Rule, Rule 1. And then also, my eyes are not as good as they once were, Rule 28. And then again, Rule 24 coming up. So, so that's what I have on the report on rules. And again, that's in your materials. Any, any report, I don't think there's any report from Dr. For, so I think we can bypass that one. And then statewide assessment, which I do think we have a report. So I am counting on technology. And then Jeremy Henninger will join for that. Jeremy, are you able to share your, your slides that you wanted to share?
I am. Can you see them?
I believe so. I guess behind us, we can see them, yep.
Okay, very good. So we're here with you today. Actually, first I want to take just a moment to personally thank educators from across the state for all their work and service this past year. Also, thank you to the Nebraska Department of Education and all the staff that works there. And thanks to the statewide Board of Education and all the work that you do. You are appreciated. Assessment. So today we have three action items before you about the new contracts for the next year for our assessment vendors. So we're asking that the board authorize the commissioner to contract for summative assessment activities from ACT, DRC, Data Recognition Corporation, and NWA. We provided a high-level summary of the deliverables of each of those contracts, and that is in your board materials today. In addition, we wanted to give a brief update about the statewide assessment window from this last spring and update on our timeline for our NSCAS growth or our, our three-year adaptive, excuse me, our three-year adaptive testing model that we are in the middle of transitioning to. So for Spring 21, we really did have a successful administration of all of our statewide assessments. NSCAS summative, NSCAS ACT, and NSCAS alternate. When possible, those assessments were shortened and added additional flexibility for districts and schools to be able to test students during the pandemic. One particular note, in addition to all of the other strategies that we used, we also provided a COVID waiver. So students could only test in person for a number of reasons. We did look at remote testing, but there are plenty of issues around that and that possibility. But, but students could only test in person this year. So districts are required to either have a score or a not-tested code for each student in each assigned area. And so, new this year, hopefully just this year, we had a COVID waiver for students. If their families had a fear of COVID, a possibility of coming in contact with COVID and did not want to bring their students in, the districts were able to mark COVID waiver, and we were able to track that information as we go forward. So we know we had additional students that did not participate in this year. Typically, Nebraska tests about 99% of their students. Only a few students each year are not tested for, for whatever the reason may be. But, but, so they're counted as non-participants. This year, we know that that percentage, because of the COVID and the COVID waiver is going to be between a half a percentage and a full percentage. So still really good. We, we're going to have most of our students tested. For NSCAS general and NSCAS alternate, we know that that's about 8,000 students that will be not tested in that category of COVID waiver. Additionally, reporting this year, we've decided that we are going to put together a special report. That report is going to be key in offering context for anybody that wants to look at the data. So the data from this year really should not be compared to last year or, or previous years, I should say, or future years for a number of reasons. And if you do any comparison, you need to have that additional context. So this special report will be linked to the NEP, but not on the NEP directly, the Nebraska Educational Profile. This information will offer a great deal of context, starting all the way last spring in 2020 of March and kind of documenting what happened with schools and being released and the cancellation of those assessments in Spring 2020. And we'll go through the hybrid learning and all the learning systems that happened during this year. Also document the shortened tests and all of the accommodations that we did to try to get as many students tested this year as we did. And so that will provide important context before people get into and dig into or analyze that data going forward. Additionally, that, that site will host our research studies. We were partnering with a number of entities to do research around COVID impacts. And all of those research studies, when completed, will be published along, on this special report page. So as we go forward, it'll be a one-stop place for everybody to look into data that's related to COVID and, and try to, to try to better understand all of the pieces around that. Please know that we're still in the cleanup phase. We, we have lots of data records that we are going through and trying to clean up to get the most accurate data that we can. It is a little bit messy process at times, but we, we try our hardest to make sure we have clean data when it comes time for reporting. And so just know that anything that I'm sharing with you today are estimates, and they are not final. So I may say something today, and later on, we may find out that that number is a little bit different than what I think it is today as we continue to go through the, the numbers and the data cleanup processes. So we know right now that approximately 90% of students across the state in the third-year cohort of high school that take the ACT or are supposed to take the ACT did in fact participate in that assessment this year. That COVID waiver was an option to put for a not-tested code. We haven't seen all of that information yet, but we do know that we had test results for over 90% of the students in that third-year cohort. So most of our students in the state were able to take the test and will have those results sent to their homes directly from ACT and will be a part of the reporting as we move forward. And typically, that number is about 99% of the students. And so there is going to, there is a big impact there. One thing that I'll say about COVID waivers and the impact in general of what, of the students not tested is even though we know that it's a small percentage, right? So between 1 and 0.5 and 1%, or maybe higher here for ACT, is that number is not equally distributed across the state, right? So one district might only have 1% of students that had COVID waivers, but another district or another school might have a much higher percentage. So even though the overall number is fairly low, it may impact certain districts and certain schools to a greater extent. And it also may impact certain grade levels or certain content areas as well as we move forward. NSCAS general in grades 3 through- NSCAS general in grades 3 through 8, we know that we had over 300,000 successful tests administered for English Language Arts and Mathematics and our Science Field Test this year. If you remember, last year, we had to cancel the Science Field Test, so we weren't able to get that done. So it pushed back the delay, delayed the implementation of the operational test by an additional year. So we were able to do the field test this year, and operational test for science will begin in Spring of '22. Our NSCAS general participation, we have more complete data on this that we're able to look at right now. So participation estimates are thought to be above 95%. Like I said, Nebraska typically tests about 99% of our students in our public schools. We're still, we're likely to hit 95% or higher for the NSCAS general 3 through 8, but we don't have the complete data yet. So we'll look forward to presenting that information on that special report in the future when we have the concrete numbers for that. What we can tell you is that that 95% is going to be better than most states in the United States. In some places, those numbers are going to be much lower, including a couple of spots where that might be 0% participated. So we feel good about how we went about doing our testing this year and the cooperation of all the districts and schools as we work for, to try to test 100% of our students still in this year. So NSCAS growth transition, so in October of 2019, we announced that we were moving to a new assessment model. We're innovating in this space and kind of leading, hopefully, the nation in this innovation process. So this new model, this three-year adaptive assessment model that we announced at the time, we've had some delays in that implementation because of the pandemic, obviously. And so I have just, I'm going to do a brief bit about that transition again, just to catch everybody up again and then kind of update that timeline. So as I said, NSCAS growth is what we're naming this. It reflects an innovative assessment that really prioritizes teachers and students and the information that they need, the instructional information that they need. And kind of, it actually goes towards interim testing in that information coming back almost immediately for teachers and for students to continue to adapt learning as they go instead of focusing only on the summative piece at the end of the year. It still does that summative piece for accountability purposes, for statute requirements, but it focuses on that instructional piece first. It is a hybrid of our current NSCAS summative test and MAPGrowth. MAPGrowth is a widely-used interim assessment. We pay for that for some, actually, for all of our districts in grades 3 through 8. Prior to that contract, 86% of our districts were using MAPGrowth and currently over 100, actually, not over 100. You can't do that. I should know that as, you know, a statistician and stuff. But 100% of our districts are actually using MAPGrowth right now. So it takes those two tests and creates a hybrid of those two moving forward. It really does create a more balanced assessment system, one that works towards multiple purposes and will ultimately bring about less testing in the spring. So right now, our, many of our students in grades 3 through 8 are doing our summative test, our NSCAS summative, but they're also doing MAPGrowth. In the future, it will do both things at the same time. And so therefore, we'll have less testing for those students. This is the updated timeline. This year, we did the shortened test, and that was help us to do research that we needed to move forward with this design. You'll see next year is a preliminary transition. We are going to have a pilot in the winter and then a spring assessment once again. And then in '22, '23, we'll have a fully operational test of this through-year system, NSCAS growth system. Also, in this graphic, you can see the number of studies that we have to do to make this transition. So as we make this transition, each of those research studies needs to be successful in the information that they give us so that we can continue to move forward as we blend those two tests and make that a unique system for Nebraska, for Nebraska students and Nebraska educators. So we just wanted you to get an updated timeline there. Hopefully, we'll have a chance to share with you more about NSCAS growth as we move forward. We are getting ready for the distribution of other communication resources, probably around Administrator Days later this summer. So that's all I have for you today. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeremy. And I just appreciate the work that our Assessment Office has done this year. It's actually fairly remarkable to think, really, across the country, the folks kind of look at Nebraska relative to the model that we had around assessment. So good work, Jeremy and team, and all the schools and everyone involved. It's been quite a year and quite a successful year, honestly, and thanks for your hard work.
Just a question. Do we have any idea of approximately when the assessment special report will be published?
We don't know for sure. We are working on the timeline for that. Usually, it's around August that that would be published. And so as always, we work to get that information up as soon as possible, but there's a lot of pieces, especially with three assessment vendors and the three assessments, to try to get that information ready for publication. Oftentimes, our districts have preliminary data well before that public release, but there's a lot of quality assurances that we go through to get that. As soon as we have that date, we'll make sure that the board has that and that districts have that information.
Thank you.
Yep.
Lisa?
Jeremy, just a couple of quick questions. How many schools are going to be a part of that pilot? And I'm assuming they both are rural and urban. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We're still actually working on the participation rules around the winter pilot. What we know is that we need a certain amount of data to inform our processes. We're working with districts right now to try to determine the best participation method. So it could be, we haven't finalized any of it, is what I should say, just because I don't want to confuse things. But we are working with an advisory committee to try to figure out how to impact instruction time the least, but still get the data we need to move forward. But it definitely will be a representative sample. Otherwise, the data isn't what we needed. So it should represent all students in all kinds of demographic ways, but also in urban and rural as well. So we'll definitely make sure that whatever sample is needed is representative of the state to make sure we have good data to inform our processes.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, thanks again, Jeremy. And that concludes my report.
Agenda item four, Special Presentations and Discussions, and we have none this month. Agenda item five, the President's Report. And that would be me. I just want to share a few things with you. Our National Association that we belong to, the National Association of State Boards of Education, their annual meeting that's taking place in October. It has yet to be announced if it will be held in person or virtually, but I'll let you know as soon as I hear anything. And NASB has, in their annual meeting, they give out several award recognitions. And last year, we submitted two of them. And one was for Dr. Rachel Wise, but she was not eligible last year for it. So I actually had Ryan, who did all the work for us as a board. He put together the recognition pieces, the nomination forms. And yes, Dr. Rachel Wise, we nominated as for the Distinguished Service Award. And we nominated Senator Patty Panzing-Brooks for the Policy Leader of the Year Award for all that she has done for education and students across the state in the legislature. So I look forward to, hopefully, one or both of these being winners. And I just want to thank Ryan again for all of his work in putting all of that information together. And it's this thick with pages, and I will forward to you the nomination form so that you can see what all was submitted. I think it's really important for you to read what we've sent in. NDE is in the process of revising our ESSA plan under the direction of Laine Carr on staff. And thank you, Laine, for doing all this work. But it's taking, Laine is taking charge of building broad coalitions of support around our AQUEST system of classification and designation. And he's putting together a group of stakeholders, and he asked me to have a board member be representative on this advisory group. And I have asked Lisa Fricki to be our representative, and I know that she will represent us well, and I was pleased that she said yes to this. So thank you, Lisa. We look forward to great things in your group. And the last thing is, well, before I do this last piece, I just want to thank again the staff for all their work in having this meeting held out here. It takes a lot of work. It takes a village to get this put together. And so thank you. Thank you all for having to come out early and put this and make sure it went over well. In thinking about our work as a board, I've come to realize we are in a major time of transition for our board. But not just for our board, but for the whole Department of Education. And I'm often reminded that transition, if it isn't painful, then we aren't making progress. And Commissioner, I want you to know that with the move to the new building site, it's been painful at times, and we're going to get there, but you're making progress. And we're seeing signs of being able to come out of the pandemic. It's been a huge transition for everyone involved in the state and the nation and the world. But for our schools, there's been chaos and dysfunction in trying to get things up and going so that our students have equity and access to all the resources that they need. And it's not been easy. But I continue to be so impressed that, I believe it was all but one school district started school on day one in person. They might have had hybrid models as well. But most of our school districts were in person from day one until the very last day of school. I believe we are forerunner in the nation on that, and I know the Commissioner shared with me that other states have asked, how did you do it? Well, it's that grit and determination and great teachers and administrators. So there's been that transition. And we're dealing with the state health-proposed standards that we've never had before. We are now in the review of the English Language Arts standards. We are in the deep dive of the changes in accreditation, approval, and accountability. Folks, this is a lot of change. Transition is all about change, but we want that change to be positive and good. And I know that each of you, your plates have been just as full as mine in the last two or three months with our work and have put in countless hours to ensure that we have quality education and equity, again, for our students, for all students. Transitions in life and work can offer opportunities for discovery. And for this reason and more, it is so important that we, as a state Board of Education, pull together and stay unified to always keep our students' best interests at heart. So I leave you with that. But thank you for everything that you have done. Agenda item six, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda, Madam President.
Okay. Motion was made by Patsy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Patsy and seconded by Patty. Per board policy, there is no discussion on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Andrea, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Neary?
Tim?
Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Agenda item, Standing Committee reports. Agenda item 7.1, Policy Committee. Patty, you're going to report for Pat. Tim?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chairman. The committee continues discussion of the reorganization of the State Board Policy Reference Manual, State Board Bylaw B12, which is policy development, State Board Bylaw B10, Hearing Officers, State Board Bylaw B8, Parliamentary Procedure and Rules of Order, and State Board Bylaw B15, Board Minutes. At this time, the Policy Committee will be scheduling subsequent meetings, meeting or meetings, we're not sure yet which, before the August State Board Meeting, Business Meeting, to discuss the restructuring of the Policy Reference Manual and to prepare Bylaws B10, B8, and B15 for action items at the August State Board Meeting. That concludes the Policy Committee report.
Thank you, Patty. Board members, is there any discussion on item 7.1, Bylaw B12, Policy Development? Seeing none. Board members, is there any discussion on item 7.1, Point B, State Board Bylaw B10, Seeing none. Is there any discussion on item 7.1C, Bylaw B8, Parliamentary Procedures, Rules of Order? Seeing none. Board members, is there any discussion on item 7.1E, Board Bylaw 15, Board Minutes? Seeing none. That concludes all of that. Thank you, Patty. Agenda item 7.2, the Legislative Committee. Robin, would you provide a report from the Legislative Committee meeting?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get into my report, I think it's important that I say to the Policy Committee, thank you. That's one area that I am, I struggle with in trying to get my mind excited about relooking at policies. So I just want to thank that committee for all their work. And since I'm thanking people, talking about the Legislative Committee, obviously, I'm always excited about my committee and the Thursday morning meetings that we had via Zoom, led, of course, by Dr. Halsted. And so I also want to thank him for all the work that he does, not the least of which a couple of those reports that you see on your, in Spark, on the Legislative Committee, 7.2 are, well, actually, all three of them are led by him. 7.2 are, well, actually, all three of them are led by him. And two of those three, he stayed up, he told me late last night in order to get those completed for our preview today. Just some very quick overview, especially of the priorities that we had for our legislative bills. I listened to the senators, the state senators, and the excitement they had about all the things that they got accomplished this year. And they should be excited and they should be congratulated. But what I'm really excited about is all of the things that we had talked about and we had put on as priorities, and now they are becoming legislation. And so I can enjoy, as the state senators did, our priorities too were met with a lot of very positive results. I will not go through those. Those are all on Spark for you to look at. But again, just really excited about that. And then all of those committees are all members who are not part of the Legislative Committee. Make sure that you read the 21, 22 legislative and regulatory priorities that we are drafting. We spent a fairly substantial amount of time, we being Legislative Committee, spent quite a bit of time in looking at the priorities, not only our legislative, but our regulatory priorities. But that is information that we are presenting to those people on the board who are not members of the Legislative Committee. So please find some time between now and I believe June will be asking you to approve those, excuse me, August will be asking you to approve those priorities. And not only approve them, but we are looking for your input. That's really important to us. Just to give you a real quick overview of what we have done thus far, and it's pretty minor stuff, really. But before I do that, I, Patsy, I remember we were having a conversation about the word that we used to encourage ourselves to reach high.
Aspirational.
Aspirational. And so that became our mantra, if you will, at our meeting in which we set these priority or, excuse me, made these changes. So the word from the Legislative Committee will be aspirational, and I'm excited for that. Some real quick things beyond being aspirational is that we're looking at changing college-ready to post-secondary-ready, just to be more consistent. But again, we're just throwing that out there for people to look at and tell us whether or not we want to do that. This was, this particular thing was already mentioned, but it was a big part of our discussion, and that is looking at the possibility of changing Rule 10 and 14 to approval, accreditation, and accountability. So that, depending on whether that all gets passed, you'll see some significant changes with those termin, with that terminology. Some things that never go away on this committee, or at least they haven't gone away since my part of being the chairman of it, the education preparation and certification and praxis. So that will continue to be part of our discussion. I think that pretty well concludes my thoughts, but I turn to, I see Dr. Halsted is over there. I see Patsy. I see Lisa. If there's things that you think we should, that you want to uplift, please do. You can go towards the, towards the president.
Patsy?
Yeah, let her.
Patsy?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I thought it might be important, and I know Brian would bring this up too, but that we discussed it, that it might be a good opportunity right now to look to change the praxis to a portfolio or to
Thank you.
a test that actually tested what people were going to be doing in the classroom or some other form to model after states around us that have gone to different forms of praxis, especially for the fact that we do not have many students or teachers of color represented across our state. And they, the people, the students that are working to go into education that are marginalized by that or by poverty seem to not do as well on the praxis that Nebraska is doing, using. So since the governor has shown an interest for the first time in a portfolio, we thought maybe we should jump at the opportunity and see if we could do something. And I think it was Brian that said with all his wisdom that we could wait till the next governor came in and see if that person would be interested in it. But maybe we shouldn't take the chances. Maybe we should go with the opportunity right now to better serve our students in Nebraska by better serving our future teachers.
I just want to add that that is music to my ears. I'm not sure if the general public realizes how difficult that praxis can be for students who want to be teachers. It has certainly kept many, many students from not being able to enter that profession. And we worked at it a few years ago, but the governor wouldn't go for it. And so it's exciting to hear that he's interested in looking at other ways. But I just really want the general public to understand that to take the initial praxis is $300. Think about the students out there that don't have $300 and who failed a test by just one or two or three points. And then you have to take it again. We just don't have that kind of money laying around. So this is really music to my ears, and I hope that you will really push the button on this.
The other thing, the other thing that I don't think people understand is that the students are tested in three areas, and they have to, they have to pass in all three areas. And so let's say that I'm a fine arts teacher and I'm pretty good, I'm pretty good in science and I'm great in English and all that sort of thing, but I'm not so great in math. And I'm not ever going to teach math. This is real, this is for real. So anyway, I might go in and fail that math test several times and not, and I would not have had the money to go back and take it when I was in college. I would have had to quit. And I loved teaching, so I think that would have been a disaster for my whole life. So we need to find a better way of matching the test to what the teachers are going to be doing. And I'm excited to, I hope that, I hope that we are more successful than we were the last time.
Patty?
Just a clarification. Are we talking about the test that is used as students are trying to enter professional education programs? Because I'm kind of hearing a little bit of that, but I also thought we were talking about the praxis content test, which people are required to take in order to be certified. So I guess I just want to make sure we're not embroiled in that.
I wasn't real clear on that, so thank you, Patty.
Yeah, it, well, it's actually, I don't know if Brian wants to come up to try to hit this, but our basic skills test is where we've talked about before, which is the entry into the profession. And I really do believe we need to look for a more affordable route. The portfolio piece, I think, is a good idea, and certainly I've had that conversation with the governor before, you know, which is one angle on it. I think there's other ways that we should be looking at, and so we'll dive into it. And I think the intent of this, you know, kind of our regulatory priorities, that's one area that we definitely want to spend time on.
I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, Agenda Item 7.3, the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee, and I am chair of that, and so I will provide a report from the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee meeting. But first, I want to thank the three, the two other individuals beside myself, board members on this committee, which is past President Pat Tim and current Vice President Patsy Cojones. So I really appreciate their leadership and working with this, on all of this. The appraisal committee reports that the Commissioner has proposed the following goals for 2021, 2022 for himself. One being to lead, conduct, complete the strategic plan review, and to create an NDE policy office and engage with appropriate policy leaders, partners, and stakeholders. The appraisal committee recommends that the board renew and approve the Commissioner's contract of employment with the following as the major revised terms. Extend the contract period by one year. Increase the annual salary by 2% on July 1, 2021, and again on July 1, 2022. And to provide 40 hours of vacation leave to use or lose by June 30, 2022. And that concludes the appraisal committee report. We do have one motion item, but before we go to the motion, are there any questions that you have for the appraisal committee? Patty?
I'm just very interested to hear, Commissioner, your thinking about the policy office and, you know, what's the purpose? What's the rationale? What's the goal?
Yeah, a couple of different things. Number one, where, I guess maybe as President Nichols had talked about some transitions, we're always trying to think a little bit ahead about the capacities that we're going to need to do well. I think our work, obviously, with the legislature is obviously important work, and so part of that's in that arena. Part of our work that's really important is with the, you know, certainly our federal reporting, all those different parts of it. Over time, these things kind of get separated out within the agency, and I'm really looking for, to make sure that we have synergy there. I will use also, as an example, standards. Like, I believe it's time to kind of really dive into what that standards process looks like for different engagement. And so really being intentional about that there's someone in the agency responsible to tie those elements together. So it's not, you know, completely clear yet. I put that in there because I think there's a need for us. It's probably something I would have loved to have been able to work on in this past year, but I add it really with this feeling that if we can build and organize those capacities, number one, we can serve the board members better in the policy work that you want to do to be a little bit, have a little bit more foresight into how we, how we actually start the rulemaking process, how we start other processes to make decisions, make sure that the information's coming in, make sure that the public input processes are working well for us. It has been a challenging type of year, but even if I think back to last, last summer, I think, you know, we were also having to answer a lot of questions about what happens in the midst of a pandemic. And again, that information across an agency is kind of scattered in a lot of different rules. And so I think if we built that, and I'm not really looking for like a lot of additional staff, it's just rethinking how that would be organized and who's responsible for what parts of that, and then lead that through, essentially through my office to ensure that's being done. So that's my thinking on that front.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to share that in your Spark, you will find a copy of the Commissioner's agreement that we'll be voting on. So if you haven't had a chance to read it, please do so. So is there a motion on Item 7.3A, the Commissioner's Employment? Patsy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the employment agreement between the State Board of Education and Matthew, is that L or I? I don't have my glasses on.
It's L.
Yes, L, okay. Matthew L. Bloomstead.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Patsy and seconded by Lisa. Is there any discussion on the motion? Robin?
Yeah, I just, I just want to emphasize that we spent a lot of time on this in our looking at the appraisal instrument that was put forth to evaluate, and that that instrument came back very, very strong. And we discussed that in our last meeting. And I know all of us know that, but sometimes I'm wondering whether the people out there understand that, well, we aren't just all of a sudden saying, yeah, let's go ahead and do this, that we spent a lot of time in executive session and time outside of the executive session in our last meeting, in which we looked at the evaluation instrument with great detail. And I guess I'm pleased to point out that the Commissioner came back very strong in each of those, each of those areas. And I can't even remember now for sure how many areas there were, but quite an extensive number. I guess I'm saying that more for our people who are out there today and maybe the people who are watching, so that they're saying, boy, they really went through that in a hurry. Because this is, this is, it's our biggest responsibility as board members, and we do not take it lightly. And we, and so I'm pleased to just say that the Commissioner ranked very high.
Robin, I just want to say I appreciate you bringing that up because the appraisal process that we have gone through, it's much different today than it was when I came on board seven years ago. It was just kind of a checklist seven years ago, and it is very, very thorough. And I believe that our appraisal process is a role model for all of our local school districts to consider doing because they are to be evaluating their superintendent every year before contract time. So, and just so that the committee knows, the appraisal committee, or the board knows the appraisal committee, we looked at some things that we felt needed to be changed a bit on the appraisal process for next year because there was some redundancy that some of you brought up in different areas. And so we're looking at cleaning that up and maybe going from 10 different areas, maybe down to eight or seven. Okay. Patsy?
Well, before we take this big vote, and I think, I'll speak for all of us, you can all say, yeah, yes, that's true, I want to say that this has been a challenging year. And the Commissioner has worked doing his normal duties plus his duties that related to COVID. And sometimes we're all worried about him because we're absolutely sure he wasn't ever sleeping. And so we want to make this vote show how much we appreciate all your work with your staff and with COVID and your normal duties, and we want you to know that we noticed.
Anyone else? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the employment agreement between the State Board of Education and Matthew L. Bloomstead. Andrea, please call the roll.
Goobles?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nichols?
Nichols?
Yes.
Neary? Tim. Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. We're glad you're on board, Commissioner. Agenda Item 7.4. Lisa, please provide a report from the AQuest Teaching, Learning, and Service Domain Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee report on yesterday's meeting, the committee reviewed a number of consent agenda items. Additionally, the committee received information from staff on the statewide assessment contracts that Jeremy explained to us just a minute ago, and recommends approval of all three of those contracts. The committee also discussed the English Language Arts standards and process, as well as the proposed health standards process. And this concludes my report, Madam President. I do want to thank the members of my, our committee, I should say, Patty, Robyn, and Maureen, great input yesterday. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Lisa? Anybody have any questions for Lisa or the committee?
You could have left that muted, you know.
Seeing none, Lisa, is there a motion on Item 7.4A?
Yes, Madam President. I move to authorize the Commissioner to contract with NWEA for statewide assessment services for the 2021-2022 year.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, so motion was made by Lisa, seconded by Patty. Discussion. Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Co. Johns?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Neary? Goobles?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Tim? Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Lisa, is there a motion on Item 7.4B?
Yes, I move to authorize the Commissioner to contract with DRC for statewide assessment services for 2021-22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Lisa and seconded by Patsy. Discussion on the motion by anyone? Robyn?
Yes, just a point of clarification that I always ask about, and this is, this test is intended for students with, as I understand it, special needs. And that's a layman's way of putting it. It's much more detailed than that, but I think it's important that we understand that there are special tests for children with special needs.
Seeing no other discussion on the motion, Andrea, please call the roll.
Stevens?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Co. Johns?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Tim? Nichols?
Yes.
Neary? Fricki?
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Lisa, is there a motion on Item 7.4C?
Yes, I move to authorize the Commissioner to contract with ACT for statewide assessment services for 2021 and 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Patty. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Nichols?
Yes.
Co. Johns?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Neary? Goobles?
Yes.
Tim? Fricki?
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Agenda Item 7.4D, the Nebraska's College and Career Ready Standards for English Language Arts. Board members, is there any discussion on that? Agenda Item 7.4E, the Nebraska Health Standards Process. Board members, is there any further discussion on that? Robyn?
Yeah, obviously, again, we had a very, what would be the right word? I want to make sure that I use the right word here. Informational meeting this morning, and I guess we said thanks to the people who were here earlier, but I think at this particular time, it would be good for me at least to say thanks for the crowd that showed up and special thanks for those who presented. I think Patty always says it so well, so I apologize for butchering what she usually says, which is it's sometimes messy, but the process is working. And Patty, if you want to say it better, you certainly can. This is the way it is intended to work. And while we sit here, and maybe we don't like to hear everything that we heard, it's still the way it is intended to work. And I look forward, and the sooner the better, for the second draft. Because I think we're going to see some significant changes in the second draft, and that we can change our topic of conversation a little bit. Not that it will be any less, but I think that they will see, that folks will see that we are here to listen and that we're going to be making adjustments based on our listening skills.
Thank you, Robyn. Jaclyn?
So I just wanted to comment about the process, and I know that we say that the process is working as it's intended. I will say, one of the things, just some feedback, I would like to communicate to my fellow board members is I think we could be more intentional with our communication amongst ourselves about where we are with the health standards, because I don't feel like we, as a body, have had a robust conversation about what we think about them, where we are, what our thought process is. I know that it was considered in a committee meeting, but even that, I don't feel like that conversation was reported back to us about what was discussed and where the board members are. So I think if we're going to talk about a process going forward and what that process looks like, or changes, or ways that we could better the process, I think that one way that we could do that is to really give ourself a space or forum for us to really discuss this among ourselves, because I personally feel like that has truly been missing from the process. And I know that we can all call each other, but if we're not talking as a cohesive unit and really being able to hear what we all think, I think that we may be missing some opportunities. So that's my feedback on the process. And I'm certain there's someone here who's probably going to have something to say after me, but that's what I have to say.
Patsy?
First of all, I agree with you on that part, on that part of it. And second of all, I think we really need to go back and take a really hard look at the process from beginning to end, and make sure that each step of the way is intentional so that we do not cause ourself extra stress because we didn't, we weren't. What I used to say to my students, we weren't promethean, we're epimethean, we're thinking afterthoughts, well, that was wrong, and we should have done it this way. But I think if we were a little, had a little more forethought from beginning to end, and I don't know if that's the staff or us, but that it would be a lot smoother. And maybe I should say a lot better, not only for us, but for our constituents.
Lisa?
I agree, Jaclyn. We've talked about it several times, and since we've talked about it in committee a few times, other issues have come up, and I'm hoping we have that conversation soon. Today, we started with process and next steps, and I hope that that opportunity comes up soon. But we have been, you know, talking about that in the committee at least three times, so.
Patsy?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you were saying the whole board, a robust discussion on it?
Well, I think it's multifaceted, right? In one way, we haven't, as a board, had an entire conversation about it. But I also think, I don't really know, I mean, the report that we get here at the board meeting is the report that we get from the committee, and so I don't know what those robust conversations are, that are happening. I, if you're not on the committee, you're almost on the outside of how we came to the conclusion of what the next steps were going to be, what the thought process was going to be. And so I don't expect to have, be able, have my opinion solicited on everything that happens in a committee that I'm not in, but in, on a topic that's so at the forefront of everybody's mind, I do think it's important for us to at least hear what other board members are thinking or how we got there.
Lisa?
And I hope that happens soon as well, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it again.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jaclyn. Agenda Item 7.5. Patsy, please provide a report from the AQuest Student Success Access and Support Domain Committee meeting.
Yes, AQuest Student Success and Access and Support Domain met yesterday, and we had one action item, and that was to renew, the renewal of Rule 11 waiver request for ESU number 13, and the committee recommended approval of that, of that motion, of the motions above. And that had to do with early childhood, and I don't see the motions above, but I don't know where they are, so anyway. Okay. There was one discussion item, Leading for Equity and Excellence LEAP, the state policy network that we're still working with, and the committee was reminded that they have some work to do this month to bring back to Zainab and I, feedback on the NDE current statements and the first draft of the equity policy that we're putting together. The committee had two update items. The first item was in regards to conducting initial analysis of NDE's equity scorecard and unearthed key ideas of focus and success from the data. We were so lucky to have Dr. Vargas and Mr. Lane Carr introduce the equity scorecard, the first draft of it, to us. Well, I bet it wasn't the first draft because there are two harder workers to make it the first draft, but at any rate, the scorecard and the data dashboard that visualizes and explains proportionality and disproportionality across multiple data points. And the committee was assigned to review the equity data workbook, which I believe is another 60-page document that we need to go through and come back in August with more opinions and discussion on what we read about that. And I believe that concludes my report.
And just for clarification, the motion that Patsy was talking about was on our consent agenda?
That's right, yeah. I thought it was consent, that's why I was confused by that.
Okay, board members, is there any discussion on Item 7.5A, Leading for Equity and Excellence Program, LEAP? Jaclyn?
So I just wanted to make a quick comment, and I'm going to be short because I know we're all kind of tired, but this is just in response to some of the comments that we heard today. I think the word equity came up in a lot of the comments, and so I wanted to kind of at least talk about our committee's perspective on equity so that people know what we're talking about, or at least kind of as we're interpreting what that means. And it got kind of combined today with the idea of critical race theory, and this is, we really think CRT and equity are combined. And I, at least from my perspective, and I'd like if Patty could also talk about it, is, I'm sorry, Patsy could talk about it, but when we're talking about equity, we're talking about equity versus equality, right? Giving every child in a classroom the exact same thing, which would be equality, versus making sure every child in a classroom has what that individual child needs, that's equity. And beyond, and each child comes with a different set of factors, okay? So whether that's what type of home that they come from, whether or not they come from, they moved here from another country, whether or not it's socioeconomic, whether, I mean, no matter what it is, whether it's a developmental disability, each child has a different need. And so I've always understand, understood our equity, or at least as we're developing it, is simply about making sure that we're providing every child with equitable resources, equitable content, so that they have what they need. Can you talk about that, Patsy?
Well, I, you're saying it pretty well. Every child, every day, everything they need. Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm so used to making eye contact that I have to keep doing that. Okay, every child, every day, everything that they need. And the diagram that we were presented, the picture we were presented the very first time, we discussed the difference between equality and equity was the three children watching the football game. I thought it was a football game anyway, as much as I know about that sort of thing. At any rate, one was standing and could see clearly over the fence, and the next person was my height and couldn't get their nose above the fence, and so there was no way they were going to be able to see it. And then the other person was in a wheelchair. So you could all, you give, each of them, well, the tall person didn't need a stool, but the person in the middle, me, did. And the person in the wheelchair, the stool would do absolutely no good. So equity is way different than equality, and I'm sorry if it somehow, and I wrote that down, if it's related to what the people that spoke to us today were, are so afraid of. And I'm going to go back and see. I hope we don't have to change the name of it because of that, but they seem to, that's the second or third time I've heard that, and so I'm alarmed when I hear something for the third time. First time, not so much, second time, my ears perk up, but today, when I heard it again, I thought, well, my, I hope we don't have to change that. But from the very beginning, we've called it equity, and I think that's a perfect example of how to explain it, and I think you have a perfect understanding of it from what you said. I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that or not.
I just, I know sometimes we have our committee meetings and we talk about things, and it's not always kind of, I guess it's the same point I was just trying to make. We don't always talk about it at the board or at the seat. So I just wanted us to kind of go a little bit more in detail about the conversations that we're having and what that means, so that even the people who are listening or the people who are here understood that that's what we mean when we're talking about equity.
I think I was remiss to, in my report, I need to thank my committee members. Jaclyn's new on the committee, and she's brought a lot of, well, let's just say she's been refreshing to us because she's made us think, think harder, look deeper. And Deborah Neary is on the Equity Committee, and Pat And Pat Tim, and, and she's kind of the opposite of you, Jacqueline. She sits back and she's the font of wisdom. And then, of course, our field, field staff member is Zainab Fijah. And so it's a great committee, and we're looking forward to moving on and doing more with that committee. Anybody else?
Anyone else? Agenda item 7.6, Budget and Finance Committee. Patty, you're going to speak for Pat?
I am, thank you. The committee discussed and sought further information on each of the consent agenda items, including the costs and benefits of memberships in our national organizations. The Nebraska MTSS contract with ESU I was discussed, noting that the fee will include all costs associated with that contract. NDE briefed the committee on the contract with Cedars, specifically providing clarification on who receives services, which does include students from across the state. Cedars serves students coming from a lot of different situations and scenarios that otherwise may not receive any additional support. The committee discussed future funding after ESU funding is gone. The contract with ESU VII for an instructional coach for Skyler High School is a new contract, which will be filled by an individual already on staff with Skyler, who will be paid according to the school's pay schedule. The need for a coach is to assist the new administration with continuity of learning and further development of the staff. NDE noted that the contract for the Director for School District Support will be funded with general funds, which should be sustainable as it is a joint effort among the SPED, ESEA, and the Coordinated School and District Support Offices. The State Longitudinal Data System Plan was discussed with NDE, going into more detail of the plan, which is still in the planning process. The committee was in support of all of the consent agenda items. As an action item, Bryce Wilson talked about, and we'll have that action item coming up soon, but the item will be to adopt the proposed revised Rule I, which is rules and regulations governing the audits of Nebraska Public School Districts. In that discussion, Bryce noted that NDE covered the proposed changes, noting input from auditing firms on the one substantive change. It was noted that no public comments were made at the public hearing. The committee discussed proposed changes and timing of moving forward with the approving of the rule. Members of the committee did discuss postponing approval until the next meeting, but ultimately it was decided to move forward with the vote during the June board meeting. Bryce also then discussed the second action item that will be up, and that is to adopt the proposed revised Rule II, which is the Uniform System of Accounting for Nebraska Public School Districts. The discussion was that NDE covered the proposed changes, noting all changes were technical in nature, and no public comments were made in the public hearing. The committee discussed proposed changes and timing of moving forward with approving the rule. Members of the committee discussed postponing approval until the next meeting, but ultimately it was decided to move forward with the vote during the June board meeting. We did not have any discussion related to the monthly board travel expense report or the in-state travel authorization reports. There are no other items, and that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Patty. Patty, is there a motion on item 7.6C?
Yes, I move to adopt the proposed revised Rule I, Rules and Regulations Governing the Audit of Nebraska Public School Districts.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Patty, seconded by Patsy. Discussion on the motion. Jacqueline?
So I would like to speak on this matter, and I'm gonna speak on it and 7.6C and D together. I will not be voting in favor of adopting the proposed revised rules. And I want to make clear why I will not be voting to adopt them. The changes that were made, several of them were indeed technical in nature. And so when I look at the document, which I had reviewed before the committee meeting, there are a lot of changes such as removing the word "shall" and changing it between interchanging must and shall, adapt, things like that. There were also small changes such as, rather than spelling out the words, Nebraska Department of Education, we're abbreviating them to NDE, or spelling out the TOSA formula, now we say TOSA. And so indeed, there were a lot of smaller changes like that, which on the surface, I want to say I don't have a problem with. My concern more was with the process of the rule adoption and how they came to us. And so I kind of went back through my agendas for the policy meeting. It looks like we did not see this in January, we did not see this in February. It was given to us as a proposed revised rule in March. That's when it came to our committee. So if anyone else wants to remember what happened in March, that's about the time that the health standards were released. It was not on our agenda in April, it was not on our agenda in May, it was again on our agenda in June. I think personally, these rules are very important. And the reason why they're important, and I think that I am having an issue with it as we review these rules, or it has been about every four years. And so the last time this rule was reviewed was about four years ago. I think we, as a policy committee, and we as a board, when we're reviewing these rules, we should be having a robust conversation about them and whether or not they are working, whether or not they're being implemented correctly, and what we want to see on a macro and not just a micro level. So I think by the time that this got to us and we were looking at very small technical changes, we had not had a large conversation about whether or not this is working for the state of Nebraska. And I personally think that is the conversation that we should be having, not rather, not whether or not TOSA should be abbreviated or not. During our meeting yesterday, I asked for more time. And the conversation that happened during that meeting was that we are under a time crunch because these rules had been already set for public hearing and public comment. And my concern about that is, what if we had had an issue with something and we voted it down? There would still be a time crunch. And so if every time that there is an issue with timing, we're just going to say, it doesn't matter, we're gonna move it forward because we're under a time crunch, then I would tell the Department of Education to always tell us that we're under a time crunch because then we will do whatever you need us to do. I am not comfortable with that and just moving forward with something and not having a robust, robust conversation when this comes before us every four years by just saying we're under a time crunch. So for those reasons, and my concerns with the process, there are things, for instance, that are happening in the district that I represent, which is Omaha Public Schools. I know for a fact that it's the district in this state that has the most amount of kids that are being expelled. How we deal with the funding there? We have the most amount of option enrollment transfer in the state going on in OPS. There's also this category of students called unverified that they're dealing, that they have. So we don't know if that child is truant, if they're coming to school, because it's been unverified. That's also part of what goes into this rule. And we haven't talked about any of that, and I don't really know when we had an opportunity to. So when I say I haven't had enough time to live with this policy or rule or really think about it, it wasn't because I hadn't read the document that was presented before us, I had. In fact, I can read documents very quickly, which is what's required when I went to law school. So that, that was not the issue which was implied. My concern is that we, as a board, have a job to look at things, not just micro, but also macro, and we hadn't done that. So for that reason, I'm voting no on this. But I wanted to bring that concern to the full board and discuss it with you guys, or at least have us to start thinking about those things. Because when the rules come to us, it shouldn't just be about crossing out TOSA and abbreviating it or making small changes. And, and the, the last thing I will say is, to say that there was no public comment, therefore it's good. Well, if things are working for people and they've learned how to manipulate a system where they, the system works, people don't show up. It's when the system doesn't work or when you change something because you're trying to make it better, that's when people show up. That's why we had over 150 people here today, because we tried to change something and people have thoughts on it. If you're not changing anything, people don't show up. So I don't know that that was very persuasive to me either to say, well, no one said anything, so it must be fine. So for those reasons, I think we need to start having larger discussions about how we approve our rules and what we do with our rules. And I talked to the commissioner about this ahead of time, so he knew what my thoughts were. So again, I'm not surprising staff or the commissioner with these thoughts. It's not that I'm objecting to what the staff is trying to do, I'm more concerned with the process.
Robin?
Yeah, just, just a question for Jacqueline, if she doesn't mind. Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding. You're voting no because of the process, you are not voting, you are, the reason that you're voting has nothing to do with Rule I or Rule II? Or, or I just, and I don't mean to be putting words in your mouth, I'm trying to get my, my mind around what I hear you saying.
Sure, Robin. What I'm saying is, I cannot say that I am approving Rule I and Rule II because we have not had a robust discussion about whether or not Rule I or Rule II need substantive, substantive changes. We did not have that conversation. However, the minor changes that are being made, that we're saying are very small changes, which is what we're actually voting on, I don't have an issue with those. So hopefully that's clear.
Yeah. Patsy's hand was a hit, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Robin.
No, 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 I was just butting in, by the way.
So are you suggesting that we take it back to the cutting board and take a look at it? Put it in, put it on the agenda for your next committee meeting?
I, at this juncture, it, I know where the votes lie. So I would rather us, if we can take a vote on it today, that's fine with me. But there's nothing stopping us from putting this back on the agenda to review again. And that's probably what I would request to do for, going forward. And I can talk to my committee chair about that.
Robin?
I have a little, it would be difficult for me to vote against, in this particular issue, Rule I and Rule II, because I have an issue with a principle. That's, I guess, where I'm coming from. And what I did, I received, I'm sure, the same email that, that you received, hey, this is a kind of a last-minute type of thing. If you have questions, please contact, I can't remember, I think it was Ryan for Rule I and, and Rice for Rule II, which I did. And so therefore, I felt as if my questions on Rule I and Rule II were answered. And, and so that's why I, I'm not opposed to your idea here that, hey, we need to have, we need to look at the process. But I'm not gonna punish Rule I and Rule II because I'm not happy with the process, if, if that makes sense with you.
Jacqueline?
Robin, with all due respect, I don't think I asked anyone to vote with me or to change their vote. I was just explaining why I was, what my concerns were, because I was the committee member who asked that we table this or continue the conversation. Also, if, I could also have emailed Ryan or any one of the staff members about the changes, but the changes were very clear. And so I didn't have questions about the, the changes that the staff was proposing. My questions more go to how we act or interact as a board and what we see as when we want these rules, when we should be looking at the rules, what we're looking at when we look at the rules, and where is that coming from? Is it only when the staff initiates a change? Or is it when we want to look at something robustly and more in-depth? So it's, like I said, I'm not asking anyone to vote with me against this. And in fact, I was very cautious to not say that. I'm just, this is the time we have as a board to talk to one another. Because if I tried to talk to the entire board outside of this setting, we'd be in violation of the Open Meetings Act. And so sometimes we need to have conversations amongst ourselves. And if this is the opportunity for us to do this, then I felt like this was the opportunity for me to let everyone know what my concern was and why I was gonna proceed the way I did. Not because I'm voting against the changes that the staff is proposing, I'm not against the staff. I am concerned with the way we are conducting business without putting more thought into the rules.
Nor.
Robin?
Nor am I. My purpose for saying this, no, due respect or whatever the case, I'm not trying to convince people to go one way or another either. You told me why you were voting the way you were. I felt it was important that you understand this is the reason that, that I am. Same thing that you were doing. So all due respect is not even needed here. So that's, that, that's my thinking.
Patsy?
Well, it sounds like the, these two action items have not been discussed to the depth that a committee member wants them to be discussed. So I, I think they need to go back to the committee. And if I'm wrong, Commissioner or somebody tell me, it sounds like they need to go, Madam President, do they need to go back to the committee?
Jacqueline?
Patsy, I think there's been a motion and a second. So at this point, we would only be voting, and Ryan can correct me, whether or not to approve it or not to.
I, I can amend the motion. Yeah. But I'm just finding out if that's appropriate or if, because it doesn't sound like it's resolved. The discussion hasn't been had.
Jacqueline?
I don't want to ask that at this time. The committee did, I believe there were four board members there. Three moved to bring it to the full board. And so I think that it's fair that we have a vote by the full board. I'm, I think that's fair.
Patty?
I agree with you, Jacqueline. I think it's appropriate to vote on the action items that we have. But I think what we have here is the need for a larger discussion, which can't take place today. Where that starts, I'm not sure. I mean, I think there can be discussion about how often are rules revised? And what kind of system do we have to make sure that really happens? And, you know, what are the guidelines for rule revision? I think there's a real opportunity there to have more in-depth, robust discussions about rules. But that's not what we're voting on, right? So I think it's wise to think about what our motion is. But Jacqueline, then to figure out, how do we proceed then with what your concern is so that that can be addressed? out, how do we proceed then with what your concern is so that that can be addressed? And so that we, I mean, we're always focusing on how do we improve? How do we improve our processes? How do we make things better for the districts and for the students that we serve? And I think this is just another case of that. But that's for another day to get started on that process, from my perspective.
Anyone else?
Maureen, can I add? Just because, as I was asked. First of all, I'm going to throw out something lighthearted and hopefully comes across that way. I always thought Rule One was, we've always done it that way, and Rule Two was, we've never done it the other way, right? So what I'm getting at, and if I could say, a lot of the times, we're doing what I'll call a ministravia, right, in our rules. And I think what Jaclyn's asking for is a deeper thought process around how we come to that conclusion about those things. I think she raises really good points about the, you know, the opportunity for you to make changes in the system that we believe would be necessary. And they're not all within our control, right? Some are, some aren't. But without you diving into those conversations in the future, we end up just kind of falling to that least common denominator. And even as staff, right, we take our cues from the State Board of Education. And I'm going to, I feel like I'm, I was like on the right path with my policy office role. What I'm seeing for us, if we're going to move forward and have the robust conversations that we need, like staff has to work different for your benefit to be able to do the work that I think needs to be done. And so that's what I offer up. I actually think this is a really good conversation, so, and I am a kind of a policy geek, so I mean, I like to throw that into the mix, but a really good conversation because I, it's important that you think about the depth of that work, not just, and not just because the agency says or the staff are saying. Because we have things that we have to get done because the law changes or something, and we're trying to be responsive to that. But I want to have a better process where you feel engaged in that, in those rule-making things. And maybe you say, hey, look, I really don't have anything this time around that, but at least we've had that interaction, we've had that chance for discussion. So I really do appreciate the dialogue of this, and I think it, maybe it affirms some of those things that I've been thinking we needed, we do do it more effectively.
Lisa?
I appreciate that conversation as well. In the past, we've had some more complex rules, especially around Rule 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 84, that we really did have, should have had more of a process for listening to each other before things started rolling. And then it's like, maybe we should have, so eventually, I...
Well, Commissioner, perhaps with this goal of yours, with your policy office, was it? That can be one of your first jobs.
I think I'm working on that faster than I realize, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor is to adopt the proposed revised Rule One, Rules and Regulations Governing the Audit of Nebraska Public Schools, School Districts. Andrea, please call the roll.
Goobles?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Tim?
Neary.
Five yes, one no, two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Patty, is there a motion on Item 7.6D?
Yes. I move to adopt the proposed revised Rule Two, Uniform System of Accounting for Nebraska Public School Districts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Patty, seconded by Patsy. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Morrison?
No.
Goobles?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Neary?
Tim?
Five yes, one no, two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Agenda Item 7.7, Strategic Planning, Performance and Improvement Committee. Is there someone reporting for Debra? She's not here today. Well, we have no action item on there, so we will just move on. Is that okay with you, Commissioner? Unless you have something to report from it?
No, I just would call out, you know, with the Strategic Planning and Performance Improvement Committee, they actually reviewed with the priority schools within the committee. Those priority schools will have at some point, I don't know what the exact timeframe is, a report back to the full board for discussion about that progress. As we discussed last month, due to the pandemic and the challenges, you actually voted last month to extend the year on the priority schools, and so we'll hear more about that essentially later this, well, later this calendar year, that's the way I'll put it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Agenda Item Eight, Additional Business. Agenda Item 8.1. Is there a motion on Item 8.1?
Yes, Madam President. I move to adopt the Hearing Officer's Recommendation, Finding of Fact, Proposed Conclusions of Law and Recommended Decision in Enrollment Option Case Number 2105, Rinders versus Papillion-Lavista Community Schools, and to adopt the order prepared by legal counsel, so stating.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Patsy. Motion was made by Lisa and seconded by Patsy. I want to take a step back on this. On this recommendation, I did not ask first if the board wanted to go into executive session to discuss this.
Oops.
Oops.
Yeah.
We'll bring the parliamentarian over to make sure...
Yeah, bring the parliamentarian. You can vote it down. Ryan, we can vote the motion down, right?
No, you can actually go, what he's recommending is you're still able to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss this item, so. So you just need to follow with the other motion, if that's your desire.
All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none?
Maureen, are you going to, do you want to go into executive session is the question I think the board needs to consider first?
Yeah. Do you want to go into executive session?
I move that the board go into executive session to deliberate and receive advice of legal counsel concerning Item 8.1, consideration of Hearing Officer's recommended findings and decision in NDE Case Number 21-05, Rinders versus Papillion-Lavista Community Schools.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Patty, seconded by Patsy. Any further discussion on the motion of going into executive session? Robin?
I am assuming that there could be some harm done to the people included in this case. Is that the reason we're going?
You're actually going in for legal counsel advice on a case, a contested case in front of you, if that makes sense.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Neary?
Nichols? Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Tim? Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. The board will now go into a closed session only for the purpose of deliberation and to receive advice of legal counsel concerning the contested case in Item 8.1. And we will move to the back room. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I move that we come out of executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Pat, or Lisa? Okay. Motion made by Patsy and seconded by Lisa. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Goobles?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Tim?
Neary?
Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. And I want to remind you that we do already have a motion on the floor, which is to adopt the Hearing Officer's Recommended Findings of Fact, Proposed Conclusions of Law and Recommended Decision in Enrollment Option Case Number 21-05, Rinders versus Papillion-Lavista Community Schools, and to adopt the order prepared by legal counsel, so stating. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Neary? Stevens?
Yes.
Tim? Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Agenda Item Nine, Information Items and Reports, which are contracts approved by the Commissioner, grants approved by the Commissioner, contested case update and information item, notice of vacancies on the Special Education Advisory Council, CAC. These items are all information items and written reports for the board and are for your information only. Agenda Item Ten, The Good of the Order. This section of the agenda is intended for board members to offer informal observations of the work of the State Board. Board members may make brief announcements about attendance at future events for the purpose of informing other board members. No business or motions or suggested actions of the board may be offered at this point in the agenda, nor should board members engage in substantive discussion about other agenda items or introduce new agenda items. Is there anyone? I do want to say that on July 14th, the Nebraska State Education Association is holding their annual Professional Leadership Day, and there are six of us that have agreed to be part of a panel presentation, three in the morning session and three in the afternoon. So thank you for those that were able to do that volunteering. More information will come out on that. Anybody else?
Did anyone write down the dates that Marion Holstein gave us for that conference?
Yes.
Yes.
October 13th through the 16th. Anyone else?
I just, I know today was a really long day for all of us. I've been reading through some of my email, and I saw people in the parking lot who didn't get to speak, and I was kind of feeling heartbroken. I just had a high school student who was, said she was number 90, email me and say she couldn't speak. So I just want people, if they're still watching, to know, email us your statements, we will read them, we do want to hear. I apologize if you didn't get to speak today, but I want to just assure people to contact us because we really do want to hear that feedback.
Yes, and I would concur that, to my knowledge, every board member reads their email from constituents. Patsy?
Here's one thing that I think we could do that would help, is we have people now who have spoken at two of our meetings.
Even three.
Three, sorry. And so we might say, if you've already spoken at one of our board meetings, we are going to take the people who have not had the opportunity yet to express themselves to the board, because it's got to be, I talked to one person who this is the second time they're here, and she got here at whatever, 7:45, and I think the people, a couple of them say something new, but some of them, it sounds pretty much the same as what they said before. So I don't know if that's possible at the door to do that or not, but if it is, that might help.
Yeah. I had thought about that very thing. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. Agenda Item 11, Adjournment. Thank you for those who attended in person and who tuned in to the broadcast. As needed, a work session will be held on Thursday, August 5th, at a time and location to be determined. A business meeting will be held on Friday, August 6th, at 9 o'clock a.m. at a location to be determined. The June board meeting is adjourned.